Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Budget Committee meeting of December 18th. Welcome to the Division of Special projects, Squamish Nation. There's an agenda in front of the committee and looking for a motion to move off the agenda. Move by Ted, sent by Peter. All those in favor, those who carries. And we've got one agenda, just a little one to see. I guess this is budget meeting number three? Four, three? And I'll pass it over to our finance staff to kick it off.
Well, good afternoon, Council. I'm Shkayven, financial analyst. So we're just here to complete the review of the proposed budget. But first, we'll start with Christina to present us the Q tools or to...
Good afternoon, Council. Christina Moore, manager of communications. Just to give you an update on where we're at with budget public engagement. As always, the public are welcome to attend our open meetings. We're collecting feedback through email, through our Twitter and Facebook pages, as well as our website where comments can be posted for everyone to see. The budget survey that we discussed last week is now closed. We received 116 submissions altogether. And we will now work on compiling a full report to complement the interim report that we provided you with last week. So that will come in the new year. We have our budget boards up in the community now, as of this morning. This is at the Brennan Park Recreation Center. So the boards are presenting the proposed projects for 2018, as well as an opportunity to provide comments. And the full budget binders are adjacent to the board, so people can drill into the details and look for the information on the particular projects. So these worked out quite well last year. We'll keep these boards up throughout the Christmas holidays and well into January. We're hoping to get lots of comments and people weighing in from the traffic that we'll see at the rec center. We also have a display at the 55. And we will have a smaller display at the library. They can't accommodate the boards, but they will have the comment box and the binder, as well as here at Municipal Hall. It is being put up as we speak. So with the OCP boards here, we've taken a bit of a smaller corner for the budget, but there is the binder and the comment boxes. So we'll be looking for feedback. As of this weekend, we also have an interactive tool to explore and drill down into the 2018 budget. I'll just very quickly take you through. So this is an attempt to try to make the budget a little more user-friendly, based on taking it from the spreadsheets that you're reviewing in your binders and that we do have online as well, but to try to... So the idea is to try to give people a bit of a snapshot of where the information or how the budget breaks down in 2018. That's a little more user-friendly than the spreadsheets.
Am I going to the budget? Or what's going on? Could it maybe? Sorry about that.
It's a little hard to read on PowerPoint, but you'll get the idea. So we have an overview of the budget that breaks it down into the five main funds: general, capital, and the three utilities, with the total amount available in each one. Taking a closer look at the general fund, these circles relate to the size of the budget in relation to every other aspect of the budget. And you have a full list of the areas down the right-hand side. If you were to click in any one of these given areas, again, these represent the size of the budget in relation to the others. If you were to click on any area, you can go down into Protective Services here and get a little bit more sense of what we spend on police versus fire versus bylaw, et cetera. Squamish Emergency Program. Moving further into the tool, we get into the actual proposed 2018 projects. Under capital, you can hover over each of these areas to see how much of the budget is being allocated to each area. And then if you click on that, you then get a list of just the proposed projects in this area with a description of each one. Those are the descriptions that you are viewing in your binder. So hopefully, a way that people can explore and understand what's happening. Same with the special projects. Under Protective Services, for example, we've got the descriptions down the side. And the same with the service level changes. So we've had 44 people viewing this so far. Unfortunately, it's not...
And when did it go live?
It went live on Friday afternoon. We shared it through e-news and through our social media channels. Unfortunately, it won't give us the analytics to see how long people are spending in the tool, which would be nice to know, if it's a minute or five. But we haven't received any feedback to say that it's... Typically, we receive feedback if it's not intuitive or if it's cumbersome or if it's not working. And we haven't received any feedback to that point yet. So I do encourage residents and citizens to visit our website at squamish.ca/budgets to explore the tool. And beyond that, we haven't received any individual feedback, specific comments, since we met last week. At all, in the last week. Other than the budget, the tool of survey.
Very cool. I'm going to tend to be...
Yeah, it is really nice. That sure will make it really clear. And I would like to have that in this. So will we keep the information year in, year out? So you can go back five years, four years from now and see what our special projects were and see kind of taxation policy involved?
We can look at a way to archive this information and to track it moving forward.
Every year, my wife tells me how much our taxes have gone up. And you guys tell me how much our taxes have gone up. And it's always there.
So when we say something, it's a revenue increase and we can't know what an integral tax bill is going to go up or not.
But so for that, it would be nice. But it would also be nice to track special projects and, you know, all those headings you have there. I just hope that it becomes an archive tool. That'd be really good.
Absolutely.
Well, Ted took care of pretty much what I wanted to say there. Kudos to staff that built this because I understand the amount of work we're making, site layout, and having all that information available. It's not a small feat.
Our web and graphics technician, Sandra Kennick, built this. It was her vision.
Well, kudos back to Sandra for sure. And so this is something we built, so it's not a software piece. This is something we built that we can keep.
It's a software, it's a plug-and-play, off-the-shelf piece of software. It's built in a program called Tableau. But it's obviously the information that we have input from our finance team's spreadsheets and customized it and built it to fit the budget. Yep.
Is it the analytics that you could get off it or sort of like the time and how long people linger on different aspects? Is there a way to get that or is it just simply not trackable? You'd think online it would be trackable.
Yeah, we'll explore that in more detail and see what we can pull. And we can also ask for feedback as well from those who are using the tool. Below the page, there is an opportunity to post comments. These are public comments, so any comment here would be posted on our website for all the public to see. But we are encouraging people to add their comments or questions to the budget pages.
Absolutely. Thank you. Any more questions, Rebecca? Sandra Becko?
We're trying.
A meeting just isn't complete without some sort of problem up there. Yes, Doug?
Yeah, just I understand you haven't compiled the information yet, but are there any common themes that sort of jumped out from the survey?
Beyond what we went through last week? Not really. The interim project, the interim survey results that we shared last week were, there were over 100 responses in that. And so we've received another 16 or so in the last week. So it hasn't really changed the theme significantly from what was presented last Monday.
Sorry.
I have some supermimics in the wheel.
Can I shift the...
Yes.
Thanks, Christina. Thank you, Sarah. Technical difficulties. Can we get that?
Yeah, that's right. So we're done.
I was just speeding things up. Okay. Okay. So that's the same agenda as last week. And all we have left is to finish up the three lists. So the service level changes, the special project, and review the parking items from the capital plan. And then some changes to the utility funds and public and stuff. And like we're just, our goal is just to get like the directions on the two lists that are leftovers.
So we'll take that information that we get from Council today and reject everything, make sure, kind of come back with where we're at in January so that we can just review and see if we've covered everything that Council's interested in.
Yep.
So you'll remember... When do we have the tax rule?
Well, I was just talking to Council Race about that, actually. So we had some preliminary information come through on non-market change, but right now, it's just total assessment value. It's, I'm not, don't have a breakdown yet of what they consider that to be in terms of percentage change. And I don't have enough other reports on there yet to do analytics to figure that out myself. So bear with us. I think it's going to be January. We can give you more detail.
Same to say it's larger than last year.
I believe it will be, based on the magnitude of assessment value. But because it's all a factor of market and all sorts of other assessment things, I just need to see the completed rule before I can weigh in and let you know how that's what that means.
Okay. So you recognize this slide from last week and just updated it with the capital, the capital plan decisions that were made last week. And you've got this end out that explains like in more detail that table. You don't have it?
It might be in section seven.
Oh, the same one. I can't remember.
Is it new or is it in the...
Yeah, it's new. I didn't get it.
Yeah, we did. So just a reminder to the public, I know Council's very aware of this, but when we look at this number, obviously, we're still in workshopping. So 7.7 is nothing to be startled about yet. And also, just a reminder that this is based on revenue, taxation, revenue requirement only. This does not indicate what a household necessarily be paying in change in tax. That will come later.
So I've just highlighted special projects and service level changes because that's what we're going to review today. And then the parking lot items, they're on the board there. And projects that would go back to 2019, there was none. And two capital projects that were a no. And at the bottom of your page, you have the changes from last week. So we can move to section seven in your binder, the first page.
And I'm sorry, should I put this in my binder?
I put like all my end out like at the end. You can put it in section seven if you want.
So are we on this page?
Second page. We're on this page here. The big list.
Fantastic. Let Mr. Copy do it. I think Council should probably copy the new one too. Does this replace something or is it addition to?
It's to replace the old list. It's the same list, except that we've created a new category for the capital reserve fund. We've separated it from the library.
You made the tax figure.
Maybe. Be happy about that.
We just wanted to give you a little more of the cumulative effect too, just a better idea. I believe the other one wasn't put until the very bottom, just so you can understand some components right now.
Right. And so just high level on the service level changes. All the service level changes are like together are 2% increase on taxation revenue. And the capital reserve increase is 1% of taxation revenue. And then you've got the RCMP and, well, RCMP and library requests are included in the 2%. So...
Mayor Heintz, before Council dives into the service level changes and the special projects that have been provided, what the management recommendation or what we provided for you is a list of what we've endorsed. Despite going to staff and asking them to be very tight and realistic with the budget, we still got about twice as many in each category. And then we further refined it with their input in terms of what we felt was realistic for Council to deliberate and prioritize.
No, so I've got the table.
Step this before you go. Council should go. You can read that.
Yeah, on the last slide, there was Economic Development Services and then there's Economic Development Service Enhancement that totals over 125K altogether with no breakdown. Michael's understanding the breakdown.
25 grand.
No, sorry, I didn't stay on number...
And what's the number of the other one?
On the page before, on the slide before. I believe it's... It probably is broken down here.
There are, every item on here does have a backup page that describes it in detail, but we're just having trouble finding the other items perhaps. Counselor Chappell, could you just provide us a little more clarity? Oh, on the special projects.
Yeah. Oh, because we're looking at service level changes. What is the question on special project?
The Council's just looking for some clarification as the difference between this item and the one that's on the special project.
Like 1416 on the sheet. My sheet was 1416.
The next page is 15, huh? You went to section seven?
So your question is regarding number 15 on the service level change list. Can you provide clarification on what the other project is on the special project?
It's number four, I'm guessing.
There's a slide of that 125 plus K in acta. I don't know if it was a stat in Michael's talk, but it's a stat in the...
I'm not sure.
Wait, today?
Yeah.
That's the only two slides from today.
Lena?
Mayor Heintz, what I can do is clarify the three economic development lines in the budget. I'll be very helpful. The service level increase of $25,000 is to rebuild the contract amount year over year for economic development, recognizing that there are annual projects that economic development has to carry out. This here is an example. There's a website refresh, a customer service management system that we're putting in. And it's ongoing projects like that, given the nature of economic development business. In terms of special projects, the $45,000 is a carryover in using accumulated surplus for the marine strategy, which is started. But that's in there, budget line items. And then 21 is, it shows the project as being $141,000, but our contribution is $25,000, and that's the BC Rural Dividend Project. And all the money is flowing to the district. So that's why it's showing up as so high, but our taxation...
I get confused with slides.
Exactly.
Okay, why don't we go through them? Somebody's sensors might get to find us here. Did you want to go through them one by one or how did you proceed?
That's really up to Council. We're happy to do that and just provide some clarification. We have our GMs around the table to provide further clarity. And of course, we have the sheets. So if there's anything you'd like us to delve into more, we can certainly do that.
Counselor Waze, Counselor Yalik, Counselor Chappell.
Thanks. One of the things I wanted to talk about was, my chief was here, is the fire services and the RCMP for a new member for each. And worthwhile, I mean, speaking for myself, I thought the justification of the case for each one of them is quite worthwhile. The difficulty I'm having is doing the two in one year. We talked about it some months ago, I think, at maybe a Finance Committee meeting, about the possibility of, we recognize that in both cases, as the population grows, we would be adding members to both the fire services and the RCMP. And ideally, we would stagger them. We wouldn't try to do two in one year just because of the budget hit. However, there's two here. It's kind of the first of this program, if you like. And they're both kind of out of the starting gates together. And so, and from my, I'll speak for myself, you know, support for this, for me, partly will depend on the impact at the bottom line at the end of the day, which requires the non-market growth in the assessment and see what additional revenue we have to deal with that. But then, looking past this year, even if we were able to support them both this year, thinking for the next three or four years, because we are dealing with a five-year plan, does that mean we'd have nobody next year and then possibly a repeat of a request for two additional members the following year? Or do we skip two years and then go to one or the other? Or do we try and get another one for one of them next year and not the year after and go on the stagger program? So without making the assumption today about whether we take them both into this year or not, I guess I'm sort of wondering where we're going maybe next year and the year after in the five-year plan and how we might get on with that.
I was just going to have Bill and Joel Ainge just rock paper scissors. I'm joking a little bit.
But do you want to maybe address that?
Certainly. Staff heard very clearly Council's direction to stagger and firefighters in the budget. In terms of the RCMP and our operational relationship with them, they were very concerned about CAO making that call and they wanted to present to Council and obviously made a very compelling business case, which is why we've put it in a separate section with the library. It's a different, if Council should do both this year, then I think as staff, we would have to go back and look at how financially sustainable we could make it to continue staggering and what the plan would be. Been talking to Jeff Christie. He's been very realistic around what we do need as a community going forward. Like it's not exorbitant, so over the last 10 years. So I guess the answer right now is I can't say if next year what we would ask for and year after that. What it would depend on is what Council wanted out of here. We can go back and have a better look at that and bring it back to Council for consideration.
Maybe just explore with Council, your openness to doing two in one year this year or are you going to be looking to prioritize one over the other, I guess, at this point?
Well, we talked about this last year and the year before, about getting into that. And I can remember clearly talking about it last year, thinking that's what we're going to do. And then the RCMP came in this year with a new ask that was the person, well, you all remember the person that they were asking for, which was, I thought that was one more than what they needed at the time. I mean, this is just kind of like a dream ask. So when we're farther down the road and we'll see what kind of money we have, then I would think we could look at that. But I thought it was a far part of this year, this year.
Okay, so that's very...
And the least about last year with the school liaison.
So it... Thank you. The CAO was asking me if that was last year. Actually, it ends up being the year before, but we felt the brunt of it last year because we had tried to phase it or provision it in. So, and I just want to clarify the sheets because I don't want the impression that everything down under other board and agencies was not in the budget. What the management discussion around that was, was that those ones really were Council's discretion. It wasn't for this management to necessarily weigh in on that. It really needed to come and speak to Council on that. Having said that, and we did our best to kind of rank the upper section as best as we could. And then the capital, of course, the CFO likes to throw that one in there. People always love it on the table, but that was not necessarily a management-specific recommendation. So I just wanted to provide some clarity. Sometimes we don't want to offend our library or RCMP, thinking that we didn't pay any homage to these ideas.
Absolutely. I didn't see these as prioritized numbers, but thanks for pointing. So just on the fire slash RCMP either or both, and then I'll go back to the list.
Thanks. From what I understood from the conversation with Council last time is that we lost the school liaison, the school liaison was absorbed into the force. Is that...
That was four or five years ago and then last year we re... More, last year slash the year before, we re-added it.
So I'm interested in the, in adding the special, the special projects.
The domestic violence, sexual assault.
Special investigator.
This year as opposed to the next year?
We can't move forward with healthcare till we have benchmarked, we can't do anything in healthcare without benchmarked numbers. And that's reliant on the RCMP doing investigations and actually moving that case forward. I think we all know how much it happens in our community and we can't do anything about it until we have a special investigator that measures and keeps track of things and is able to benchmark. If for a few years, it becomes negligible, I'd be happy to drop the position. But I'm wondering if there's a way we can look at sharing that position with the school liaison? If that's something that, you know, if we have something without expertise, is there so much work that they can only do one thing? Or is it something that can liaison with the school as well? Is combining those two positions?
And I'm trying to remember, as it was presented last week, there is someone within the district, within the current contingent that has the skills. They want to focus that person solely on this so they don't necessarily have other case files. That's right. Within the investigation unit, they would just be solely focused on this. And they backfill that position with another person within the corridor that's already here. They don't seem to think... They don't seem to think they're gonna backfill it from Regina or wherever else. So it's somebody that's already here. I just wanted to clarify that because this person already exists, and it's not like these files just wouldn't be worked on, they just wouldn't be focused on by one person. Now, there's benefit in that. I'm not arguing that. I just want to clarify. Is that fair?
Mayor Heinzman, that is correct. And the RCMP, in terms of their ask and business case, it's, when they're talking about hiring resources, it's all enough, but in terms of their constables and members.
So I definitely clearly will lobby for that position because, as, you know, just having a corridor that is full of this sort of case file, it's impossible to do it off the side of your desk. And as you all know, doing things out of the side of your desk, this isn't a caseload that we want to be left off the side of a desk. We need numbers to support healthcare in order to receive, we still don't have Monday to Friday nine-five rape care, so that in itself is an issue, and until we can get numbers that actually show that it's an issue in the corridor, which will take a special position to actually focus on that work, we are not going to get full-time healthcare or any resources in healthcare on that side of the hook. That's one person.
So would you advocate over the fire department?
No.
Request that?
No, I'm not looking. I think that.
You're looking to fund both?
I am looking to fund both. I think servicing our community, we are rapidly growing, and I don't see it as a draw. It's not something you want to make a choice doing. There's other things that I would cut, and I can pick them.
Okay. Karen, on this topic, then I'll go back to the list.
Keep the fire services in and come back to the RCMP ask, opposed to the tax one.
Anybody else want to weigh in on this?
I think we should do both.
Done?
Yeah, I am leaning towards both unless it just takes the taxes to some unreasonable level. Just, the reason I had my hand up was to Council Chappelle's point. My recollection from the presentation was that this person would end up with a full-time job as opposed to being able to do part this and the part liaison or something like that. It was something like a mighty case file load or something like that, so it wouldn't be able to share. It's a designated person.
I'd give it a go. I want both funded.
I generally think, of course, we all want both funded. That's, I think, given. I'd like to understand exactly, the investigative unit within the RCMP, I'd like to understand that workload, because that's the department they're adding to. And I don't understand where that workload is now, or how this, you know, I don't understand how they can choose within an investigative unit, or they just not, they just have too many files per... We didn't quite get into the depth of that. But I think a little about saying that there's value in both of these. We're a growing community. We've got to keep up with both the fire department and the RCMP. I think fortunately, council had wanted it to be staggered initially. When you put both decisions in front of council like this, it's almost impossible to choose one over the other because they're both highly important, so.
Did you just say that they do have the RCMP on staff right now that does that? Investigate, but they also do other stuff as well?
Yeah.
Sorry, I was actually gonna speak to the staggering.
Okay, just give me a second.
Yeah.
So, yes, I mean, they certainly investigate domestic violence and sexual assault. What they're saying is that they will get one other additional body in their investigative unit that would be solely focused on domestic assault and sexual assault, domestic abuse. And that, I don't know how many are there now, four, they would have five people in their investigative unit, and one person would be focused on those types of crimes. And then they would backfill at general duty, because it's someone from general duty. I think they want to move into this position, and then they would backfill the general duty person. Is that clear?
We're, as far as the RCMP, we're full. I mean, we've got all that they've asked for, you know? I thought they said with holidays and pregnancy leaves and everything that they're right up to the proper number of complement that we're supposed to have.
Not that we're supposed to have, that we've requested they have the enough complement to fill that. I think they think that we should have probably many, multiple ward constables based on our population and workload, and that's why council, over the last couple of years, has said, well, let's strategically bring one in on every couple-year basis until we're back up to what they deem. They think we're understaffed, but they have provided us with the staffing for the budget we put forth. Can I make that clear or more than here?
Just to add to that point, just to put it in context, in my first term, RCMP had difficulty filling spots that we were budgeting for, just through shortages in recruitment and so forth. But my understanding from the conversations is that's not the case now, so if we create a spot, they'll find something to fill, whether it comes from some other detachment or internally. Or the question I asked the inspector, or the answer I got to one of the questions, was that in addition to the complement that we're talking about here, the 24 plus possibly one, there's other RCMP around funded by other things, for example, from highways through the province, First Nations. I think I had other things around. That's why we said there's a surplus of people in the area that he can draw on so that we get what we're paying for.
Susan, Jason.
Thanks. I also want to point out the expertise is completely different. It's not just that you're getting an RCMP officer. You're getting somebody that is doing exactly what our community has asked for, which is liaison for women's healthcare services, like actually working with a women's center, working with the shelter, and getting the expertise and training as they need to be able to work with the community. It's a definite expertise. It's not something that just comes in off the street when you have the excess training. I think it's of great value to the community, not just like having another RCMP officer that has traffic, but working with community groups is incredibly important.
They didn't really speak to that. This is the investigative unit. So I'm not, I mean, obviously, but I'm not 100% sure exactly. And it is someone within the unit today that already has these skills. They would just be dedicated to this. But it's a good question about how do they see this role integrating with, you know, hospital, women's center, with other pieces, or are they purely investigative and not necessarily supported?
I had understood it as a.
Well, I just don't, I don't know. What's that?
I had understood it that it was a pretty comprehensive position because they would have the, if they're mixed with the entire RCMP, they don't have the time.
They're in the investigative unit.
Yep, in the investigative unit that they can actually work with. Because there's new tools as well, like self-reporting, where you don't have to report to the RCMP, but you can report to the women's center. And those tools are very new. They're only like six months old where you can actually report. So then you can have a liaison, if you are a woman or a man that's gone through assault, you can actually report to a third party and then work with the RCMP.
I think we completely, I think everyone agrees that this is, it's very interesting and opportune.
So that change actually makes it integrated into the community.
Jason, if you have.
Yeah, I was just gonna say that my recollection from the presentation was that there was definitely, in the business case, an argument to be made that it will help with existing caseload in terms of clearance and following up on the files. You know, recognizing that this person would probably be a nine-to-five kind of person, but, you know, initially, the BOP would, you know, take the report, but then it could go directly to this person, and I think would probably enhance that capacity as well as, the other thing that resonated for me in the presentation was the fact that this person would be located here pretty much permanently and would help as, you know, we get our fresh recruits every five years and, you know, really to have that person anchored there, I think, would be a big change.
So what I'm hearing is people want to keep it in the budget for now, and then obviously, we may have to read as a whole bunch of issues, depending on where we land, but at this point, we're keeping both in. Got Karen, and then Susan, and then people.
I have a few questions. So I'm curious why we need more FTE to put signs up, and why we can't just reprioritize work?
Are you focusing on the number?
So I think .3 FTE, and why that can't be absorbed both to seven-four.
If you go through the charts, largely it's a matter of volume. And we're maxed out on that as it is, it's one-third material, two-thirds labor on that. It's simply a matter of capacity.
We have so many signs.
Well, we're increasing them all the time. Which with every new subdivision is, there are new stop signs, new parking signs.
So developers don't put up the signs in front of their property as part of their street?
They do, but then, after a year, then they're asked to maintain, so when someone plows them over, we have to go back and replace them, right? There's just, there's a natural attrition. We've replaced the, last year, we replaced all the parking signs down town. We would like to be doing that again in 2018 if we change the hourly rates on.
So on the operations, they're all broken out into different responsibilities. Is this just a matter of being a part-time or opt-in, a full-time position, or how is this all tipping out?
It's probably adding, if you look at the.
Different skill sets generally.
Yeah, where we can, we'll sort of aggregate them and hire or expand a, turn casual into a temporary or convert a temporary into a full-time if it makes that. But in all likelihood, some of these are going to be added as additional casual hours or seasonal hours.
And the other one I want to ask about is the danger tree removal. And I know that it says that the reason we're putting this in there is because there's development and swarm, creating forces, instability. So when they put down landscaping deposits that we take from everyone, I think, can we not set aside some funds for danger tree removal so that we're not on the hook for new danger trees they create by taking down trees? It just seems like a cost that we shouldn't incur because it's because of development.
There's no, I'm not aware of any legal way we can take a reserve for that purpose.
No legal way?
Hesitant to suggest the alternative. I mean, we can take securities to ensure that people complete their development, but not to maintain it.
It does seem a little ridiculous that this is a consequence of somebody else doing something on their property that's affecting municipal property. And we're just talking about danger trees on our property, not on Crown or somebody else. It does seem a little bit strange that we would infer that cost. And you don't think there's any means to be able to recoup that through development? What DCC's presented.
That was the other thing. Are we sure it's just on municipal lands? We don't have that many.
No, if, to be honest, I'm absolutely certain if there are Crown lands and there's trees overhanging roads from Crown lands, we'll be dealing with those. What we don't deal with are trees on private property. Those are for the individual landowners to deal with. I mean, as far as Crown, we'll be dealing with housing and danger trees.
Was there something that precipitated, did something happen? Can you give an example of this?
A particular specific, no, behind.
Robert?
Behind, we've had twice now, behind, not related to development necessarily, but, you know, the upgrades, the Discovery Trail, so behind where the brick is and Brown Automotive on the one end, twice we've had trees on our land fall over onto the buildings. Then there's insurance claims, et cetera, et cetera. The person on our staff, Andy Dawson, who's responsible for this, doesn't have enough budget to go through and do inspections of all of, even our properties for danger trees. This year as well, we had a tree at Brennan Park go over and land on a Mercedes outside the aquatic center. So, and we had another emergency one right outside the campground as well. So these are, it's not just related to the development areas, but it's also our own properties and having enough resource dedicated. So $10,000 is just that home packed amount of time, it's not a full time. But it gives a little bit better inspection on our own properties as well. I know that's a little bit different than what Gary's at.
Karen, what do you want, why not? No, even the bottom.
Susan? Just on that, the regulatory bylaw and wayfinding signage increase, I want to remind council, we've added signage and like crosswalks and solar panels to run those things, and I think it's, this is minimal, like, and the handicaps, we just asked staff to change all the handicap signs, so, you know, these incremental increases and those changes that we make that are good for the environment and good for safety are going to require more time and resources from staff.
Anything else?
Is that, are we at the next?
We are at whatever you want to talk about.
Okay, the carbon neutral contract services, I would like that to come from the community and not be contracted, but resourced from expertise in the community. $10,000? Number nine.
Mayor Heinzman, I could get some more clarification on that? Are we talking about volunteer hours or another agency?
Number nine. If you're looking at carbon neutral and ways to do carbon neutral better, this is mitigation, not adaptation. So mitigation, we have an entire university that teaches mitigation. So we have carbon sign, we have climate scientists, many of them in the community, and I think they, you know, a working group could include the needs instead of asking for contract services.
So I believe this position was intended to support the working group for carbon neutral.
Yeah.
So I'm not sure that, you know, I can't speak to it. I'm giving Gary a little bit of time here to figure out. But when talking to the director of engineering, he certainly felt that they would need some support through the year on specific expertise.
And I don't think this is saying it's not someone from Quest doing it. We're not getting specific, so it's just support for that work. And ideally, it comes locally.
Mayor Heinzman, further to what Christine has said is that, yes, it's the working group within the organization to make us, work us towards carbon neutrality. The $10,000 is to seek out that expertise and have that resource there to do that. And certainly, if we could leverage Quest, absolutely.
Not just Quest.
Anybody in town.
Absolutely local expertise, definitely. And if it's for a project, for school, and it's free, then great. But because we're prioritizing this working group, we didn't want to assume we could get that expertise for free, and so we put a little marker in here for some of that.
But this isn't giving the contract anymore.
No, we haven't.
This is just saying, this is support for this group.
Yeah, absolutely. No detail has been proposed, other than asking for the resources. And absolutely, if it's someone local, we do that.
So just to understand, so it would be like engineering expertise on how we make our swimming pool or whatever X service be technically less carbon intensive? Is that the sort of thing, like changing a heating system or something like that? Or is it just like reducing carbon?
The scope, the spectrum is wide in terms of our internal operations and how do we come?
Carbon.
So yes, it could be an engineering opinion on heating or the pool. It could be.
Transportation, it could be whatever. But the group needs support to be able to help it move it, but it's not actually determined who gets that contract.
I just worry that those little contracts actually get lost and the work gets lost because it's still stuff that has to be budgeted before and then. So having all these little, like little contracts here and there, that work has to be, come back to staff and be resourced and funded, and it ends up, just you have a whole bunch of little make-work projects everywhere that actually we don't have the capacity to initiate. So noticing carbon reduction is one thing, and actually being able to implement carbon reduction on large scale is something completely different. I'd almost rather have adaptation funding than mitigation funding. And next, Chris.
And certainly, our strategy is both, very clearly illustrated. And certainly our strategy is both, very clearly illustrated in the document.
This is an adaptation group.
Yes, however, this is not the only carbon.
I'm sorry, I didn't see adaptation.
It's embedded throughout the budget.
I would like mitigation to also be embedded throughout the budget instead of having an extra line item.
I believe it is. This is how support the work is being done.
Mayor Heisman, without going to the Director of Engineering at this point, this is a very specific working group within the District of Squamish staff. So a cross-departmental group to move the District of Squamish itself within our operations towards carbon neutrality. $10,000 is a small fund to help with any external expertise that may be required in terms of what the group is working on. Recommendations from that group, should it be a large project around, say, the pool or heating or fleet or something that requires a lot of capital money, would be recommended in future budgets.
Peter.
I'm in favor of both the fire services and RCMP asks, I think it's about $270,000 total. Until we get to the end of the process and then kind of having a look back and see if that's supportable. And in aid of that, I'm wondering if Mr. Stoner, Chief Stoner has, he wanted to add to it so we could probably get on with his day. Should we have more testing items on his day?
Mayor Heisman, Chief Stoner is here as acting senior director on behalf of Jeff, who's on holidays. So he served for a long conference.
Thank you, perfect. The other thing was.
You can step down here.
I'm glad you go there, but the other piece to the danger tree removal, I agree with funding that and because of the district's liability specifically. And there was another item that kind of puts that on my horizon, which is the tree that's in the Fisherman's Bend area that we talked to the OBC rail people about many times, that nothing's been done about and it's dropped branches fairly regularly on, with a lot of small children playing in there. Might be time to give them a heads up again because it's a real danger tree. Water widowers up high, but they don't seem to have.
Okay.
Anyway.
If you have something like that, just.
Yep. The ice skate rentals, I'm trying to remember back to the presentation that we got from Tim. I'm in favor of the rentals themselves. Was there any FTE associated with that? Somebody to rent them out of?
That part was paid for through the cost of the rentals. So we do have the, I forget the name of the staff, the program assistants who've come out and will, they're on the ice anyway. So the half hour before and half hour afterwards. This is more for the replacement of skates because they're really old. So we're going to have, if we're going to take this on a reserve to replace them.
And please note that that's intended to have an actually positive impact on taxation because of the revenues brought in from the skating rental.
I would like to speak in support of number 22, the environmental commission. And I just wonder if it's actually, if a part-time person is going to take enough of the workload off of the stress in that department.
Does that expand an existing?
We're currently just, we just have environmental coordinator, that same one.
We've got someone in on, one position is part-time. And I think this expands it pretty much to a full-time, I'm trying to remember.
We currently have one and a half, this goes to FTEs in that.
I believe so, yes.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Was that confirmed?
I think that's a part-time new position.
So we only have one full-time position?
Oh, right now it's a casual, so it's essentially.
So you brought somebody to help with the backlog?
Yes.
And this is to make, embed that essentially permanently?
Correct, yep.
And you're finding that that's enough, that's a part-time position?
We believe so.
Okay. Any, yeah.
Well, I'm actually on a different page, same discussion sort of.
Milk engine. So just before you want to, was that on that last one?
No, I, but if I may add something else.
Okay.
Only because I was, I feel like I need to repeat this, only because I heard you say, Mayor Heisman, that when we put the fire and the RCMP in the same budget, it really puts towns on a difficult spot because it's difficult because it's public safety. So just to reiterate, the management team did prioritize the firefighter over the RCMP for councils. So that you know we prioritize and then with the relationship with RCMP, they still wanted to come forward.
Okay, so just to clarify, it's been presented as fire and council can decide on RCMP. I mean, we decide on both, but okay, that's good.
Yeah.
Sorry, Doug, and then fire and then chief?
Yeah, so I'm on page eight of nine, which is Special Projects General Fund. Looking at numbers 43 and 44.
Is he getting ahead himself?
Well, to be perfectly transparent, I was looking at the other page one and it's a whole bunch of little things apart from police and the fire. And for myself, I'm having difficulty kind of, and they all make sense and it's hard to immediately to knock one of them out. And if I did, it wouldn't make that much difference to the budget. So I'm looking for something that actually has a little bit bigger bang for the buck, if you like. And those two kind of jumped out. So page, and six and seven, page eight of nine. So number 43 is a Crown water lease. And that is.
Those are the three.
These are the project for, presenting for 2019.
We appreciate the thought.
You're missing that number, sorry.
But just to remind council, I mean. If you want to bring something forward, you can argue to.
I wasn't arguing to bring it forward, I was going to put your partner into the future.
Okay.
Looks like I'm making a difference in this year.
Okay, two things. First, I think we talked about this the other day, I've forgotten. The procurement review and centralized purchasing, does that include the analysis of the living wage or is that living somewhere else?
Thank you, Senator Mayor. The procurement, essentially, it would be difficult to tackle the living wage without some centralized purchasing and procurement person. Having said that, would we get to it in 2018 realistically? No, we would need to stabilize the department first. So we would need to actually, this proposal is that we would actually do a thorough business process review on purchasing, determine what would be the best use, whether we centralize, decentralize. And if we did do some form of partial centralization, that it would fund a part-year procurement agent of some nature. But it's basically a two-prong. Once, if we did go there and could stabilize the policies and procedures, et cetera, for procurement, that would make it easier to start moving into the philosophy and policies around living wage.
Linda?
Mayor Heisman, further to that, and hopefully I'm not overstepping the CFO here, but there is a lot of work around procurement when you're talking about external contractors as it pertains to living wage. There's a report coming forward in January, as you know, that we've calculated the living wage and analyzed our wages within the district. So that part of it could be something that we need to implement in 2018 through HR and in talking to the union. But out of respect for finance, the balance of it would be much more administratively.
Yeah, and that's how Vansity and the people who came said, you know, do it slowly, get it in your own salary grids. Move in, in a strategic fashion into investment.
So following up on that, if we want to implement living wage in 2018 based on the report in January, should we put in a sustainable change to accommodate those few positions that currently aren't active in all reports?
And it's only like wanting to view, it's negligible really. And some of them might not even qualify with living wage anyway.
Mayor Heisman, based on the initial.
We'll get the report in January, so I don't want to.
I know, we're budgeting it, so I just don't want to lose it as a service level change if we do need to do it.
Mayor Heisman, based on the initial report that I've seen, and I need to go back through it with Mr. Sim, is that it is truly negligible in terms of if we add it to the budget in January, we can earmark it now in a discretionary and it would have a negligible impact overall.
I think, is it fair to say its focus is essentially on us becoming a livable wage employer, not on us expanding that into the broader community? So they're not connected necessarily?
And this isn't extending it to procurement, this is just our salaries?
No, just our staff.
And that's how Vansity said the best way to do it is to do it in a step. Do it internally, do it with your procurement, how do you, and it's a multi-year thing.
Okay, and I just wanted, my last one is all the library, 25, 26, 27, are those all in the budget? I know you've left it out because you're discretionless, council. But, or are you saying like, we're not recommending the RCMP, we're recommending fire? Are you saying we're not recommending library? We get to decide that because I'd like council to have a discussion if they're not in the budget currently.
So are we in the 7.7?
So just a reminder that we've structured this like a workshop. So 7.7 isn't even really a specific management recommendation, right? We've taken everything on these sheets that's under council's review and we're loading it back into that reconciliation schedule so that decisions can be made here and in real time, you can start to see the impact of that on your bottom line. So I just want to clarify that because there are some things here that we've ranked lower that if you'd asked us and we had to put the bar somewhere, we would put a bar somewhere. But we recognize that we've tried to trim it down as much as we can. We've tried to provide some ranking or prioritization on this particular one. And then obviously, we didn't feel that staff were in a position to weigh in on the library per se.
Mayor Heisman, for clarity then, the library and the RCMP currently are included in the overall that's been presented to council for the workshop purposes?
So I'm certainly supportive of keeping those library items in, although calling the library audit one, library audit seems weird because we should just give them $10,000 more in transfer payments for the primary audit rather than designated for the audit. The way that's lancing.
Yeah, I know, it was a kind of a bizarre way of making the request, I mean.
I think they were trying to justify why. Because they're not going to spend it on books, they're not going to spend it on services, they're going to spend it on having us pay for their audits with them taking late fees and rental fees and spending it on. But either way, they have $10,000 to try and put.
Yeah, or they can augment programming, yeah. It's $10,000, yeah.
Counselor Shapone, and Counselor Park.
The whole living wage conversation with our wages, I think spending taxation money to get this initiative done in order to look at our own wages just seems sort of insane where the majority of our community is making $12 bucks an hour and we're examining $100,000 jobs to look at living wage. And I know it's been explained different ways, but you can call these expenses negligible, but we've got 60 negligible expenses on here that have to compete.
Let's get the report. We're getting the report in January, the work's already done, the report's already.
We have to put the money in the budget right now and I don't want the money to be taxed for because I just think this, you know, that. I would prefer equitable.
Staff just said it was absolutely negligible.
I want an equitable employer instead of a living wage employer. How do we look at those things in our purchasing contract? Like where do we, where do we stop? Like, it just bothers me taxing for things when you should be looking at comprehensive, living wage, equitable employer. There's a lot of different things you can look for that make it fair and equitable. And I think wage for this district, when we're all, you know, like.
Let's not argue something, the report is coming in January. We, staff just said it's not an impact on the budget. It basically is two different jobs within our collective bargaining room, that's it. It's negligible in the budget, no extra taxpayers' dollars are going with this. It's literally, so let's not just prejudge it before we see the report, which is coming in January. Counselor Prior.
Yeah, thanks. I'm happy to wait for the report, but I do think that that procurement person was the one that was supposed to save us some money. So I want to make sure that we get that procurement person.
Okay. The timing on the procurement is not next year because we need to get the TTP and a bunch of other things in order for us to be able to assimilate that into the finance department strategy and plans. If I'm, that's correct? So it is, it's definitely in there, it's just not in there for 2018 because there's still a lot of background in work that needs to be done before we get there. But it is sort of planned for 2018, 2019, 2020 in that zone, correct?
Mayor Heisman, sorry for clarification, what is planned for 2019?
Christine?
Thank you, Mayor Heisman. I do want to make a separation. The procurement request was not 100% tied to living wage. We have a report coming regarding employment wages and we only have, as Ms. Glende said, two positions that would be considered not livable wages. And so those would be addressed in that report in January. It is not on this sheet right now. The procurement was brought back up because obviously if you do want to carry on into procurement, we need to find some platform to do that with, but it would not be in 2018. As it was, actually, management had bumped the procurement position down into 2019 based on the fact that TTP was still going on. We are finding though that there's some difficulty with the current policies and procedures. We're trying to address it on an interim basis, but obviously in a decentralized perspective. That's difficult to just throw a new policy on the table without broader procedures and operating training and things along that nature. So we moved the procurement back in for council to review and consider just as a risk mitigation situation to see if council wants to start on that in, near the end of 2018 to actually start doing business process reviews, deciding what makes sense. We do expect there will be savings. Ms. Glende is a little less, or more conservative than I am, or Ms. Klassen is more conservative than I am in her business case because I actually showed it with a payback of about seven years last year. She's showing it longer just because we don't really know specifically what the savings will be. But absolutely, we do expect that if we can bulk purchase and start to get more efficiencies in how we procure, that that would have a number of productivity improvements. Hopefully that explains enough why it's back here and it's.
I think that explained it very well, so let's try not duplicate that conversation in the near future. Jason.
Okay, I'm still on the idea of, you know, how do we get the RCMP in this year? And kind of recognizing that probably next year, you know, the non-market gain will help eat up some of that impact. So I was looking at some of the special projects that we might want to choose to put off for another year. So I'm looking specifically at.
Page 11.
Page four of nine, section seven. This means having a small thing. Page 25, cemetery nights of fun.
Like, Senator Mayor, like, should we maybe keep it focused on one list for now? Maybe I can, like, write it down on a post-it and, like, we can address it when we get to that list?
Oh, okay.
Yeah?
I thought maybe we can go, we had one of them. Oh, okay, I just wanted to make sure. Okay, well, if that's the case, we can.
Just hold the thought, yeah.
Which projects are you thinking about?
So in this.
No, I'll, I can come back to it.
Yeah, okay.
Let's focus in on this, on page one of nine. Is there anything in this one, and as Doug said, a lot of them are fairly small with the exception of the transit, so with extension. Is there anything on that list that people would like to take out? Yes, yes, do you?
So in addition to that, what I was going to suggest is for the library, I think we should go with the increase of the open hours. However, I think we should hold off on 25 and 27 and just because I know that we've had a lot of expansion in the library in terms of hours and staffing levels over the past few years. And this might be the year to just kind of do status quo a little bit and focus on just some of the service enhancements as far as, you know, an additional hour, I think that will, seems like they can do that within their existing staffing. And they'll audit, from what I understood in the presentation, they get a grant from the province. So, you know, that's kind of, to me, as sort of taking on a little bit of a download. So I just thought that was maybe a time to, to hold off on that. You know, recognizing that, I mean, with the security guard and all of that other thing, I mean, we have really increased significantly over the last few years. And I love the library, don't get me wrong. I think they do a really good job, but just might be if we're looking to find a few. Um, but just might be if we're looking to find a few savings to have, you know, to put towards, you know, that's twenty thousand dollars we can put towards that RCMP and get a little closer. And then I have some special projects that we've all saved for probably. But that's sort of my thinking, um, on that. And then, um, the only other thing, um, I'm reluctant to, but if we have to, I mean, did we, are we sign sealed and delivered on the DC Transit? Can we shave anything off of that? We're pretty, pretty much committed to the one ninety-one.
We just had a revision on that number from engineering. It's our understanding that this has been revised and based on the latest meetings with transit.
But at, at this point in time, we have the option to reduce that number if we needed to.
I'd have to.
I guess best to get Chris back in to answer that question. I think we're, with the MOUs that we just signed, I think we're committed to that. But maybe I'll get Chris to get it.
It would just be good to know, I, I kind of a yes or no. And then if, if it's a.
It's probably yes.
If we're not totally committed, maybe we could shave a few thousand off of that and just put this here.
And with the DC Transit one, it's either you shave off a program now, so either you don't do the Southern Parks program or you do.
Right.
And that was sixty eight thousand.
I just tested and guaranteed.
And we also. So if we, if we can get a drop date on the transit commitment.
Yeah.
It seems a shame, you know, you say yes, they come before our budget. We haven't seen the overall budgets to understand the timing thing.
That's the expansion of the service, the DC Transit.
No, I don't understand, yeah.
Yeah, like, I mean, seriously, as far as the parks thing is concerned, it would be not in the new RCMP officer, probably. I hate to pit one against the other, but that's, that's.
Well, one is about sixty one thousand, the other one's almost two hundred, all said, so.
One's one sixty seven.
One, one seventy, okay, so it's, it's two and a half times. Yeah. Uh, I think Karen's next.
Yep, just on the library, for clarity, um, the provincial grant hasn't changed. The audit is paid for through, um, Lakeview and Lewton County. So they're taking it out of their own revenue source, they prefer not to. Um, and on the staff one, it's a really small increase and that would make all of their staff full-time, which they've been trying to do. The board's been really trying to make sure that everyone's making a living wage there and moving everyone to full-time hours. It makes the jobs more attractive to people, it retains people longer. And this, by bumping this up, they can put some new, um, services under that lib, library system. So that's why they feel it's important to do that, just creating equity across the board. Of the five hundred surveys they got back, so many of them talked about the importance of the library to the families in our community, kind of the service and everything.
The one that just struck me as weird was the audit. Um, so I would be okay to say no, you still have to be responsible for your audit. But consider the two staffing increases. Question about that, I mean, if they, maybe through to Council Elliot, through me, Council Elliot, there you go. The library open hours is adding time. And yet they're taking a staff person up to thirty-five. Wouldn't they be the same thing? Like, I'm trying to understand what the difference is. Or I guess is one just.
Well, because they're open seven days a week, they shift people through the full week. So people aren't working their thirty-five hours, one day, five days, three days, so that's why they're doing that.
So there's just staffing increase hours, or you just have more people in the library for five more hours a week, basically, through the other one, okay? Okay, so everyone okay with taking the library audit off of this list? And doing the other things as well, right? Okay, really good with that, no? Uh, besides that, on page one, any other thoughts on, and we're going to get back, uh, DC Transit? Gary.
Yeah, we did, we did just sign the MOU, but it's an MOU, so we can walk that back. So there's a bit of backtracking to do both for our staff and their staff. But yes, it's up until February when the transit budget is locked in. We can walk back the MOU and ask them to reconsider.
Yeah, it. Do you want to?
Well, and so I wa, I would like to sort of just, you know, have that information, like, how far out for council to consider as we consider some of the other options. And, um, you know, I, far be it from me to want to cut transit expansion. But if, again, it's a special case in this year, but if we can get our RCMP officer, but maybe we can find savings elsewhere.
Can you just refresh us of the amount for that piece of the transit expansion to the parks?
I will do my best to interpret this spreadsheet that I received from engineering. In September of 2017, 2018, it appears that there's a net municipal share of forty-nine thousand eight forty-one for increase of Sunday and holiday transit service.
We won't.
And then, uh, there is a hundred and sixty-nine thousand seven forty-four, um, starting in, and that's just the September to December piece, from what I can tell here. Improve the core transit between Garibaldi Village and downtown. And then, of course, they prorate all that out to the next season for them. So, but those seem to be the two main initiatives, um.
So there's no Southern Parks one?
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed one, yes. In April, um, they're looking to do the introduce seasonal South Squamish Park Services. And that's sixty-nine thousand seven oh one.
That, that's the one that I think that the Gondola and the province should pay for as it's servicing their assets.
And just clarify, is that the municipal share of the sixty-nine or is that the total?
I believe it's, it says here it's the net municipal share, but, um, but that seems, based on this listing, I would just want to make sure we understood. And that's looking in for the 2018, 2019. So how that shakes down into our fiscal year is a little unclear to me right now, but.
If we could get parked out and maybe get that number back? But it sounds like, I'm hearing a general nods that that is something that council would want to reconsider. Okay, anything else with this case? Don't see any. We're going to move on to page four. So, newsflash, that.
Just so they can clear, okay, except for the, um, DC Transit, that's part and the other, that's no. Everything else stays on the list?
So far, everything is on the list. R-CMP is a.
So we're parking our CMP as well. Okay.
I, I think my understanding from the conversation is we're going to keep our CMP in now, but we may want to revisit it. So it's sort of like half park. That's what I was. Like, go take it out of the running total, leave it in the running total. But depending on where we lie, it may be something we start to say next year. Council's supportive, but is leaving their options open.
Okay.
Does that make sense, everybody? Okay. All right, moving on to page four. Did you want to preface anything on this page four?
Yes.
May I as well? Just a gentle reminder that right now, the special project list is below our last year's envelope. So, um, just to reiterate that obviously council can make decisions about any of the projects, but I am a little bit concerned that you reduce the envelope a considerable amount because it makes next year harder when you might want that envelope back.
No, Jason, you did have your hand up on this one first, and I'll go to Karen then.
Okay, so, uh, I was just thinking perhaps the, um, number twenty-five, the cemetery master plan?
Four of nine.
Four of nine.
Six or seven.
Um, first of all, um, definitely thinking that maybe we could wait a year. And then, second of all, kind of more of a, I don't know, council wants to inspect staff. But it just seems odd to me that we need a forty thousand dollar master plan. Like, the operations budget for our cemetery is, if I recall correctly, quite small. Um, and I'm just wondering if there might be a way of achieving the sort of same desired result, which is to make sure we, you know, plan for the future of the cemetery without going through that kind of process. Um, and so I was sort of be thinking about that, um, if there was another ask coming along in the future. Um, but I'm thinking even in spite of all of that, could we go another year and hold off on that? Um.
Well, why don't we, does, does somebody, Gary?
Yes, um.
Very confidently putting his hand up.
We have, we have sort of started on some of that pre-work. We are getting close to running out of space. We don't have unlimited time on this. We've pushed this back, I believe, if, if not, this is the first year we, it's been pushed back, if not the second. And we have one staff member that essentially handles most of the cemetery stuff and that positions, but five, it has a full-time position. So there is really no capacity to do this. Hence, this is contract work for somebody else to do.
What do we get for forty thousand dollars?
It would be a financial plan and a physical plan of how the, the columbarium, the future cemetery is laid out. And a financial plan, sort of what, what are the numbers going forward to make that be a little more robust from a financial point of view. We really don't have a long-term plan, the closure expenses that we need to maintain, the perpetual funds that we sort of, again, are jumbled off, off the side of someone's desk. And we are getting close to really having, I mean, I guess we don't, we could, but we will run out of space and then at that point, we just won't be able to offer the service.
You need townhomes in there.
I'm sorry.
All the buildings with the little doors and. Yeah.
That's, thank you, my townhomes.
Columbarium, neither. Okay, so shall we park that or do you want to do with that?
Yeah, I mean, I think.
I think it's been on, 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 yes, for twelve, fifteen years now.
That's how the next council's back.
I have Counselor Elliot and Counselor.
Yeah, the, is, so just following, I have my own question, but just following Jason's is, providing a cemetery, is that part of our mandate as a municipality, is that an option?
It's an option.
Um, okay, so my question is more philosophic. Um, so I heard you say, Christine, that our special projects, you know, budget is low where you want it to be. But I also see that we have seventeen initiatives that are carrying over from last year.
Correct.
So I'm a little bit concerned about approving a big list of special initiatives and taxing for them this year, but then not all the work gets done and we have huge. So it comes down to both funds and capacity. So I, maybe we're biting off more than we can chew. So I'm, I'm wondering about, I know we set sort of this target for a special project, but the last few years, we've also had a number of projects carried off. So I, where is that balance and are we getting it right?
And, and some of those aren't necessarily a capacity issue. Some are just where they, when they started.
For sure.
In the year and when they finish, so just maybe.
Well, and I think one of the other issues, um, we had over a million dollars worth of special projects last year, just for clarity. We did some from accumulate surplus, we did some from Community Works Fund, we did some from whatever. So to your point, I think it is very valid. A million dollars in capital projects is probably too much for this, of special projects, sorry. It's probably too much for staff with growth and everything to manage. Um, the trick here is that, um, they often bring us projects that are funded by other sources to get a few more projects in. So it is a good question, maybe it's some of those other projects that we need to take off, even though we might have other funding sources for them, maybe that does put us past our work plan capacity. I believe that, um, our CAO has really pushed back on staff and asked them to be diligent and careful about what they put into the budgets if they can't humanly do it. As far as we know at this point, we've received back that they're willing to do what's on the plate, kind of looking to our, to big hit areas there. But, um, so at this point, I think what we've presented is felt to be doable. So, there, and Christine.
Okay. Are you done here?
Um, I guess my only question is the planning personnel. And, um, just what that role will be focused on, just growth, just special projects?
Well, this is what, this is actually maintaining current staffing levels. It's the way it was funded previously.
I would just like to speak to this one. Uh, management had a discussion on this, actually, planning did ask if they could bring up. We do have six planners in the building right now, or five point eight, I guess is the correct number. Um, but some of those were brought on for, to deal with OCP. We now still need to do some zoning bylaws and, and a certain policy work. Uh, so as a management team, we decided that we would leave it here as a special project and a temporary staffing component while we waited to do our longer range work planning review because we don't want to keep creating certain bottlenecks throughout the organization with, you know, one department being staffed up and then the other departments not being able to flush, uh, the productivity through them. So that's why we've left it on the special project, but we took it off the service level change. So it is maintaining existing planning staff as you know it today, but it is to finish off policy work.
Think there were about a dozen pieces of new policy. No, no, eleven, kind of the OCP carrier, through zoning bylaw, sub-area plans, ag plans. There were about ten or eleven policy pieces. So essentially, this maintains the two, two FDs are essentially on policy creation backfill and then remaining staff from the mix between policy and development work.
Thank you. I have Susan DeGee.
Thanks, here is the extra hundred thousand dollars in rural, it's with the rural development economic fund, which the number is a hundred thousand dollar plus that I saw on the board. So we received a grant for a hundred and sixteen thousand five hundred dollars. I've let the, it should be done within that project capacity. The grant was applied for, for the work to be done. I don't want to add another twenty-five thousand dollars to that project. A hundred and sixteen thousand dollars is a lot more capacity than we've ever had in economic development. So adding another twenty-five thousand dollars to that grant seems unnecessary.
Linda.
Thank you, Mayor Heisman. Um, the rural dividend grant and the program that the district has signed on for is a three-party initiative with the Chamber of Commerce and Tourism Squamish. Each entity was required to submit, um, some funding in order to get the grant. The grant's not a hundred percent. Um, and so this is a split between three agencies, including the service.
So you're saying we've pre-funded the twenty-five thousand before it went through budget?
That was, go ahead.
There was a report to council.
Yeah.
When we were in this year.
With the rural dividend fund?
We pre-authorized.
And that was the one that was for external economic development, like?
It was for this project specifically.
The website?
No, no.
Or is it working together, or is that the combined treaty part?
Mayor Heisman, the, the project, Tourism Squamish and the Chamber primarily are working on skills and training. And economic development, it has escaped me, just one second, there's another. Our team is doing something completely different, but it all dovetails.
Within the scope of the.
From the same grant. And I will get the detail on what our team's doing as it relates to the rural dividend.
The report that came to council, I guess it was two months ago now? It talked about our contribution.
Project that it was doing, it was on bringing businesses to government, like.
So we've already approved it, we've already approved that. We've already approved that. Anything else?
Is, is the entire amount of money to go into that? There's skills and training, we're not working on that, but we're building a website to attract business.
Linda.
Um, the service skills training is something that's being led by the Chamber of Tourism Squamish. Open local depth, open local level data initiative is what the district is leading and I can read detail if you'd like.
I, at this point, it's already approved.
It's already approved.
Yeah. Uh, Jason, oh, no, I'm sorry, Doug, not Jason.
Thanks, I just wanted to speak to the, um, the opening comment on this page about, um, the level of special projects. And I take the point that, you know, if we reduce it, it's just a bigger step to get back up to what is sort of a historic average for these things or archives. And I take the point that, you know, if we reduce it, it's just a bigger step to get back up to what is sort of a historic average for these things or our contribution to them. I think from my perspective, the thing we're wrestling with is how we can accommodate, uh, the R C N P request. Um, and if we did that accommodate it, I wouldn't expect a mixture, um, either from the fire department or the R C N P. So we'd have a ineffective drop to that extent, um, which we could build up with special projects. Because we wouldn't have, um, I know we're talking about their salaries, but, um, but it's a funding level we're climbing to and we're not going to be increasing. So it's, anyway, it seems if we take away from this to sort of fund the R C N P this year, uh, we wouldn't be funding the R C N P again next year. Does that make sense?
So if I may, Mayor Heinzman, so, um, first off, I just want to say that the envelope, that being about four fifty to four eighty. If council wants to reduce their envelope and is comfortable with it being reduced over the longer term, of course, council may do that. When we put in a service level change, it goes in for this year and every other year on the plan. So yes, you are stepping it up, but next year to maintain it, yours, your special projects of four fifty, if, you know, if we now have to take it from three fifty to four fifty, you're going to see that lift again to get it back to what you consider your envelope to be. So I guess the philosophical question is, what would you like your envelope to be? Because maybe, maybe we're presuming that you want a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar envelope, and maybe you don't. Maybe you'd like to see fewer special projects year to year. We're just suggesting to you that normally we have quite a few special projects because that's a lot of the time where we are able to address a lot of the strategic plans or new emerging initiatives is often through the special project.
Please go ahead.
And, and I take your point about the lift. Uh, we're contemplating a lift this year between those two positions of somewhere around two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, and if we reduce special projects slightly, then the overall effect on the budget might be, say, one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, and if you add a hundred and fifty thousand dollars next year to keep them going like this, you just have a line goes up. And that one hundred and fifty, I, I appreciate we're still funding the fire, firemen and the police officer next year. When we're talking lift to the budget, um, we're not lifting it again for those positions. So we could lift up a little bit of special projects to kind of get back to where we historically think we should be. So it's, it's part of the.
So you're staggering the special projects with the increase.
Exactly, part of recognizing that there's going to be increases, but it's part, part of keeping it a sort of a smooth increase as opposed to a flat and doing something like that.
The other, the other thing I noticed in all these new positions, they're making the assumption that they're starting in January first or funding an entire year.
So.
So, uh, what I've done on the spreadsheet, the cost is at seventy-five percent of the position. And I just wanted to show like the, what the full picture was. So if a position, um, is that's like, the cost is at seventy-five and then like, you know, just to show that you're proving one full F T E. So if it's like fifty grand is here.
But we'll tax for seventy-five percent of that time, so they can start in April.
Yeah. Take that into consideration.
Except for first, that's no joke.
Except for the C A, R C N P, that's the full year, yeah.
Because it's contractual.
But when does the contract start?
It's, uh, Jan, is that in January or March?
Very much to March.
So it starts in March?
It, we, we don't assume approbation of it because we have to actually give our number back. Help me out if you can, but, uh, my understanding is once we say, declare that we're willing to grow up that position, then we fund the whole thing. I mean, again, you could probably do it similar to what you do now. We have sort of our, our ratio or our amount and then not budget up to that. We could do that if we don't think that they could get there right away, I guess.
If it's starting at the. Linda, go.
Mayor Heinzman, because the R C N P contract goes March to March, um, and I'm assuming we could do this, we'd have to double check with our simple finance. But if it was considered nondiscretionary in twenty nineteen to twenty-five percent, then the hit this year would be three quarters. And then the hit next year would be a quarter, nondiscretionary.
And, and that's a way of ironing out the hit.
Mm-hmm, yeah. And then next year would be the full.
And there's seventy thousand, uh, dollar included in that one sixty-seven for a car.
See, that's the other piece that doesn't always come into the equation is all the gear isn't necessarily associated with the position. So the true cost of the position isn't always directly evident.
We'll have to check that. When they initially indicated they wanted two officers, I understood that there was a car involved with two officers, but not for the one, but we'll go.
Okay. Doug, are you done?
Yeah, I, I mean, my point being that if I'm right about that, we have a little bit of flexibility without really punishing ourselves in following years to reduce the amount of special projects issue.
Jason.
Um, well, I mean, I'm just looking at a few of the, uh, the special projects in general fund. There might be some other ones that maybe we could put off a little while. Um, so I'm thinking in particular, um, the Adventure Center, washroom tower, fourteen thousand, that's another twenty-eight. Library carpet, twelve thousand, um, Brenner Park Recreation Center flooring repairs. Um, interesting to know, I mean, I haven't seen those rooms recently, but like, how bad is it or is it an aesthetic thing? I mean, it says a tripping hazard, but.
People call this last.
Oh, did we?
Yeah.
Did I miss that?
Maybe, you might have. So we had an emergency repair, there was a sewage block.
Mm-hmm.
And they couldn't find the, the asphalt for Brenner Park were missing. And so they were, they had to do some scanning and digging, so there's big holes in the floor. And that's what this is for, is to actually repair and then put the flooring over top of it. Because they are there in the, um, kitchen area and where the janitor's closet is. And I think the seniors or.
Neuro fit area that.
Where is it?
The neuro fit area has.
Neuro fit, okay, yeah, that's where they had to.
That's not good for neuro fit.
They drill holes in the ground, it's to help, it's to repair that. And then the Adventure Center, one is interesting, um, you, you know, the washrooms there, they have big, long counters. They're, they've come away from the wall. And it's, one of them is sort of just propped up right now and they have to replace big parts of the unit. So, um, it's really a safety issue with tourist buses coming through and large amounts of people coming through and putting stuff on the counter, seeing their kids on those counters. Because they've come away and they're expensive, they're, they're expensive counter, um, fixtures that they've gotten there. So I, I don't know if it's one of those risk versus, you know. Where is the, Susan, just after me, where is the, um, the, for this multi, this, see this guy multimodal evacuation transportation plan that Whistler's leading that we're coming into? Where does that eighty-five thousand come from?
The predictive service, uh, provision.
Now, we had set up that provision to help iron out increases in staffing and providing other things. Um, I'm not, still not really happy with this whole, the way this whole thing's come about. Um, Whistler's going to go ahead and do it even without us. They can't do it without us, so, um, I would almost feel better that we use that provision to help out, iron out these two massive, um, whether it's a car or whatever those additional costs are. I'd rather us pull out a provisional fund for adaptive services than to do this transportation plan that we haven't gotten real clear in case of why the scope is wrapped so dramatically. So Linda, you want to speak to that?
Uh, Mayor Heinzman, um, Chief Bill Stoner may want to add some more detail for me. Um, in terms of this project, Whistler, um, ideally wants to collaborate with us on it. Uh, they were naive on the scope, absolutely. The message we've received from Whistler is yes, they're going to go ahead with or without us. If they go ahead without us, they'll only do for Whistler, um, as opposed to the whole region. And so what this will pay for is for Squamish to do our own, like, windows. It's something that Squamish could do at an hour a time, um, separate to, to their study. And Bill, I don't know if you want to add some, like, to the mayor, if you want Bill to add some more.
Sure.
Yeah, um, that maybe it's a big subject, I don't know whether you just want to throw things out there, you have a specific area. Why does Gold Creek, uh, really, we blatantly just said, as we said before, we underfunded it. We should have gone about it expression for interest before we went out. Sorry, sorry. Um, but the successful performance that we did have in, they were only piece, the only proponents out of the performance we had in that the Whistler was choosing to go with. It has an engineering piece, it really looks at the volume, how to get everyone from Whistler, Squamish, down the highway, you know, worst case scenario, maybe a Sunday afternoon, midsummer, when everyone's coming out of Whistler. Those type of things, it's the only one that had that engineering piece in, and that's where the Sculp Creek did. We didn't take into account how much that engineering piece was.
Yeah, it, it, I don't know how they're going to do an evacuation plan without considering sensitive communities. I don't know how they're just going to do Whistler only evacuation plan. Um, on this particular topic, I have Karen and Susan, and I still have a list to vote out of, so.
Um, this one really informed me, however we fund it, I think it needs to be in the budget. Um, in reading Alexis's business case at the back, it, it's clear about how important this is and the reason why it saves money over the long run for both of our communities to participate in this process. Come up with a joint plan. Um, it, you know, given the experiences we've seen in other parts of our province, in Alberta, here before, and in California. The more summers we wait not to have this plan in place scares me. Because I think most of us hold our breath during each fire season, um, because it would be an issue getting people up down the highway. And this looks at all modes of transportation of the region, boat, air, road, train. And, and I think to have that kind of integrated approach from Whistler itself makes a lot of sense. Um, so whether we fund it out of provision or use that provision to fund an R C N P officer and find another way to fund this, um, I think it's really important. And I think this is one of those things that our community doesn't know it needs until it needs it. And, you know, the work that Alexis did on the flood management, that was so useful to our C N P officers who went up to help evacuate ones like this. They did through that experience. And I think having that capacity and that knowledge here is really, really important.
Uh, Susan. Yeah, I'm, I, I feel the same. I think we need an evacuation plan, of course, and it should be joint, but I just wonder about Whistler being, saying things like they can do it on their own. That concerns me as well, and that we're using our provisions, I mean, it's the funding source, uh, that we definitely need it. But there's other things that I think we need in our community for emergency services, such as Alexis last year had put in, um, the, um, their emergency pods. Maybe Bill can help me out here, or Gary, that we had these pods in the budget last year that didn't make it, they got cut. And they were supposed to be in the budget this year, and I haven't seen them. So they were basically, uh, having containers with sandbags, shovels, emergency services, maybe even Wi-Fi pods, so that we didn't lose all our services. And we had, uh, you know, diapers, food and everything in the pod around our communities, which we lack. So those are resources that I'd like to see for our community before I work, figure, I work, we have one way and one way out. So it's either, and whatever Whistler figures out, we can piggyback on. But, and if they're going to do it anyways, but emerging those emergency pods was really important to me for my community, like being able to access resources that we need to actually dig ourselves out to be well.
So, and there's a question there about why last year's priority emergency thing has been now superseded by a different emergency management. I think that's the question. I do want to take a break, and there's a whole bunch of people on this list, and I want to ask Robert a question. So maybe, I'll, if it's all right with everyone, we're going to take a five minute break right now?
Can we answer that question?
And, and, and Bill will come back and answer that question right away, and we'll come back. Right. All right, recess for five minutes. We are back in our community home meeting, um, and Fire Chief Stoner, you were going to answer Council Schfeld's question about last year's priority.
Community hubs.
Yeah.
Yes, um, I will give a shot, but we're fortunate to have been joined by Alexis, who will probably be better able to answer than us. I believe, um, Alexis, feel free to step in, her, um, priorities this year, we set out knowing that.
Maybe, maybe I'll just frame it. So the question was, last year we had some emergency management priority, adding some of these community hubs. We, it didn't make the budget. This year, the priority must come back as the evacuation plan and not the community hubs. So the question is, where are we with the community hubs and why is this more pressing than that?
Oh, okay.
What?
And she can step in, but I.
Sure, why not?
I, I believe.
You were, you're in luck.
Uh, uh, yes. Um, I believe a large, she had in the back of her mind that she may not be here, it was here, and it was prioritizing what she could do and what, you know, consultants could look after. I think that was part of it, and I also just think it was prioritization, putting priority on this. But Alexis, step in where I'm.
So in the spring of last year, we applied to get funding for the neighborhood hubs, but we were unsuccessful, as well as unsuccessful getting through the budget process. Um, so, and that's fine, because we have so many other priorities that we're working towards. And one of our biggest things is trying to build upon what we worked on last year, and that was evacuation. And so when it presented itself that we could partner with Whistler, that that became the priority. And as well as just with knowing that I'll be away for a year, um, and not really fair to leave a new project with somebody that isn't familiar with kind of what we're doing, that, that's been put for two thousand and nineteen. So we've got planned for two thousand and nineteen business continuity in the neighborhood hubs.
Any further up to that, follow up to that, or?
Yeah, I just wonder why, you know, to me, taking care of our community with hubs that can be utilized right away, yes, we need, I don't doubt, I think the evacuation conversation is separate. But we keep, uh, the community hubs are something that you can keep on pushing out.
Yeah.
And they are needed desperately and for the reasons that Council Elliot said before, that, you know, that it's until you have emergencies in your community or in your neighborhood, that you don't have the resources, the essential things that you need. And a meeting place and a place that's safe to go to, it's really, those hubs last year were a priority for me and.
Then they're still, like, it hasn't left my act, like, it's still in my work plan, and if I, I'd known, I would have brought my work plan.
I'd like to do less of it, less of the evacuation plan payment and put money into community hubs. And then maybe that money isn't enough to pay for them, but less than the impact this year. So that we're saving up money and we don't take the hit all alone.
Can I respond, I just, just the two pieces with that. The one is that, um, one, I also was meeting with Squamish Nation last week to see if we could partner on the neighborhood hubs. So I'm still looking for opportunities for the funding, but I just kind of feel though, what's been successful in our program is that we try to complete one project as we, instead of going on to a next one. And even though we could put money towards the neighborhood hubs next year, we don't really have worked out the plan and what that looks like with our partners. And it might be a more piecemeal than if we had the opportunity to fully commit to that project in two thousand and nineteen. And we also have, within every school district, every school here, we have containers already sitting. Um, and so we have supplies strategic in our area. And then I'm also working with Matt Simmons for stockpiling of just resources for flooding events as well. So even though that doesn't pain people in neighborhoods, it's still helping our community. So it's not as though that's been the back burner, it's just, it's just not what is part of the two thousand and eighteen work plan.
Um, on this topic, I've got Karen and Heather. Um, so the full budget amount for this project is somewhere north of two hundred thousand. And Whistler's committed how much of that?
They've committed, so the, the project we originally is two hundred and forty, and they've committed to fifty percent. And they've gone to council and got approval for two hundred thousand with I D A. And if we can't come up with the funding, then they would go ahead without us.
Um, and so the project could still proceed even if we didn't meet half, given.
The project, the scope would change and the deliverable would change.
What would change for Squamish in terms of the scope? Would we still end up with an evacuation plan that is robust and useful to us if we didn't fund half of this project?
I can't say with certainty, but I, I do think that it, it would change because they wouldn't be looking in detail to our community the same way they would be do, it'd be Whistler focused. And the priorities would, instead of trying to look at what it looks like for our resources and our evacuation routes and how are we looking for our twenty thousand? We'd just be one piece of an equation that would be more focused on how Whistler brought their, um, we'd be sitting on it like the same way Assler D is going to be sitting on the committee, could be a committee member. And, um, we could give. And we could give feedback into the plan, but we wouldn't help build the plan or the scope of the plan and make it benefit our community.
If we, so that's if we just funded what we, the $30,000 from last year?
So what if we funded, what we'll get at the end of this, for the end of this year, is that we'll basically have a roadmap, a gap analysis, and kind of like the skeleton of what we're going to do. And the meat of it's going to be the beginning of January, which is actually the traffic analysis. So the main reason why we're doing a plan is because neither myself nor my counterpart in Whistler have the engineering ability. So what we're really trying to get is actually the science behind it in terms of how many people can get on the highway. What is it to do so safely? And for me, what I want at the end of this, and why I think it's a valuable project to us, is that I want someone to help us with the decision making so that if we ever do have to evacuate our community, that I will have a very informed, come to Linda or to come to the mayor and be able to say that we need to make the decision at the 12-hour mark because we know that we don't have the capacity to get people out safely at that point. And what you saw in Williams Lake this summer was that they were, it was too late when they started to evacuate.
I have Ted and then Susan.
Yeah, thanks. I thought we were trying to round up a little bit of money for the RCMP position.
So like, we're going to focus.
Yeah, I know. But I think that our portion of this is more than really is fair, based on the numbers that I've heard. So I think we wouldn't have to spend all this. I do think that an evacuation in Whistler is different than an evacuation in Squamish because if we have a flood down here, it has nothing to do with an evacuation up there. So, you know, we should do something for Squamish. But ours would most likely be flooding. I mean, we would have fire lines in Highlands, too. But it's a different kind of evacuation. So if Whistler does it regionally, they will probably leave out flooding in Squamish.
Our hazards.
But I think we could get some money out of this. We don't leave all that money.
Do you want to share that?
Yes, our hazards are different, so ours is debris flow flooding. But the same piece as evacuation is evacuation. And our corridor is one highway, one in. And even if Whistler does evacuate, it's going to impact us greatly, and it's going to impact us economically as well. So there's no way we can not, if they evacuate all of Whistler downwards, it's going to impact us. And vice versa, if we have to evacuate out, it's going to evacuate the whole corridor.
Was there any discussion during the process of, was it always a 50-50 share? Or was there discussion on, on any given day, there's 50,000 people in Whistler, on any given day, there's 20,000 people in Squamish? Was there any discussion about a different formula for sharing costs? And Whistler's, I mean, it's those staff that are procuring this, they kind of control that side of things? Was there any discussion at that?
Yes, there was discussions. There has been discussions, but through, just at the general manager level. And it seemed at that place that they wanted to do a 50-50 because of just the partnership being 50-50.
Susan.
Thanks, Karen and Linda. I guess where my difficulty lies is Whistler deciding to do this with procurement, even though it was a joint effort on our emergency staff, our council really hasn't been involved, our, you know, our public is not involved. And you can't do an evacuation planning without Squamish. You can't just go and decide to put something in your budget, do the procurement, and then tell a community they're responsible for 50%. They have to evacuate past this, and it impacts us, and they have to involve us. It's as simple as that. It's not, we're going to do it now, and we're going to evacuate past you. You have to involve our community. So funding 50% when your population is a percentage of that population and has different geo-hazards and different technical hazards, you have to do, you have to accept that we have lesser population. You have to accept that we only have a $35 million to $40 million budget so far. And that we can't afford the same amount as a community like Whistler that has a different revenue stream. So those things have to be taken into more robust of an account. It's not that we don't, we absolutely need to work in conjunction, and we have to sit at a table, and they have to have us sitting at a table. It's not, we're going to do this regardless. It's those, that's crappy. I have to say that aloud, that's crappy. To sit at a table and say, we're doing this regardless, and we're not, you know, that you're not, you're going to get lesser of a plan if we do this on our own. We have to be involved, we have to have some funding, and we have to work out what that is. And since we don't have that conversation right now, I think that we have to leave, leave some money in the budget for this so that it happens. But our portion has to be discussed at the table with politicians and not just at a staff level. I just, I think that's fair and reasonable.
Okay, I've got Karen, Doug, and Peter. And then I'd love to actually have a conversation about if we funded this, how much? Karen.
So I heard a couple of assumptions, which is we might have a fire in the Highlands. But we can have a fire anywhere, and it could come down the west side of the river, a junk river, race right to Gentville, North Yards, and all the way up to Brackenville. We have people that can't believe we've all over our district. This fire can start anywhere on a windy day, and we will need to evacuate more than this. So we can't assume that it's a few thousand people. It could be the whole town. The chances of having to Squamish, Whistler at the same time, very remote. But it could happen. We have one highway. And talking to some of the politicians up north, making that call of when to evacuate people, when to turn people's lives upside down, people with livestock, people with children, people who are in the city and not here, but their children are here, that is a decision that's very tough for politicians to make. And one day, someone sitting in that chair will have to make it, between the CEO and the mayor, to make that call with the help of our emergency services. So I would argue that we leave the full amount that's been budgeted in the budget right now, that over the next few weeks, before we come back in January, the mayor has a political conversation with the chair of the S R D and the mayor of Whistler. And we determine a way to make sure this happens, that it works for the whole region. Because that's what happened up north, everyone pulled together. And I find this conversation a little bit distressing, that we're not talking about this as helping everybody from Pemberden down to Squamish to deal with this effectively. So I think there's a political conversation to be had, and we park this and leave it as it is right now until we get a few more answers from our colleagues from the north. But to say it's not, we need a plan to evacuate. I'm not sure what community wants to go through another summer with that one. I think that's irresponsible.
I have Doug, Peter, and Ted.
Yeah, I'm in favor of leaving this in the budget as it's proposed for the time being. Keeping in mind that putting it in the budget and writing the check, as I said earlier, are two different things. And there's a discussion to be had, I agree with Counselor Elliott, at the political level with the other affected parties about cost sharing and scope and so forth. I don't have a problem leaving it in the budget right now. We're not taxing for it. It is coming out of substantially reserves, for lack of a better term. And so it's not to impact taxes paid this year. I appreciate we could take monies and use them for something else. But we've got all kinds of accumulated surplus and forms of accumulated surplus we could do that with if we chose to. So I don't think it's an either-or thing. So I think this is a blind item in a budget. Obviously, further discussion. I mean, there's a number of circumstances I can think of where Squamish could have to evacuate and Whistler not. And we would need the plan for that, which presumably this plan would cover. So it's not just a matter of dealing with people coming through the highway from up north. There's a lot of different scenarios. So I think we do have to be a part of this. To, you know, given the history of this province in the last year, I think it would just be ridiculous not to be involved in something like this. It'd be very short-sighted. So I'm in favor of leaving this in the budget as presented.
I got Peter and Ted and Susan on the list.
I agree. And, you know, we have flooding possibility and wildfire. And if you overlay what we saw last year up north over this community and the wind that we get through here, it's a pretty terrifying concept. So I would be in favor of leaving it in there. And I think we need that conversation. I don't want to do it and exclude it. I think we really need to step up and talk to Whistler.
Yeah, I agree. But what I do not necessarily agree with is our neighboring community deciding to do a joint one, not following a process that we're participating in and deciding that we'll pay 50% without any discussion. So we'll leave it in, and I look forward to that discussion. And I would like to have an equitable for everybody. And I do think that we do have other areas where evacuations would affect just Squamish and obviously not Whistler when it comes to flooding and stuff like that. So I'm all in on that, but I just don't like the way it came out. So we'll leave it in the budget, and then when we have the discussions, let's have our joint meeting with Whistler and have them do it sometime like we do and discuss it again.
Thanks. Yeah, I believe all of us said the exact same thing. Leave it in the budget and then discuss the, and I find, I don't think Counselor Elliott meant, I think all of us agree that we need an evacuation plan, and all of us agree that we need our own. And that the offense that I take is that another community has stood up and been like, this is our priority, as if it's not our priority as well. And leaving politicians out of it is not appropriate. It's not that politicians aren't going to be making those decisions. It's that we make the budget decisions. And we make the budget decisions that impact our community also. And it's one priority over another priority. And then evacuation, of course, is a massive, massive priority. And that we don't want to leave our community within an evacuation plan with one highway. And you can't have a community in north saying, we're going to do this regardless. That's, I find that a little bit insane. So we've all said the same thing. We're going to leave, you know, hopefully we'll leave the money in the budget. But hopefully, there'll actually be a community discussion. But I also find it, on our budget, with transportation, regional transportation, all these, like Whistler, we'll just do a plan and maybe we'll involve you later, that whole conversation hurts me to no end. I find that politically irresponsible. That's where I find the political lack of responsibility.
So on this, I think because it's coming out of a reserve, we're not taxing for it. We can determine the exact amount through a conversation at Whistler. I think everyone realizes this is an important issue, obviously. Question to Alexis. This, an evacuation of this magnitude, is there anything other than wildfire that we even contemplate an evacuation other than? What's that?
Flood, flooding, you could have a flood, you could have a flood that could take out. For us, the, would be the debris flow in the Chikai and things like that would be the example.
Would be?
Yeah, we have a potential for about 8,000 people. Would be our biggest, which even a thousand people will challenge us.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
It is unusual, but it's not never. They used to train to show dangers good through Squamish as well. So there's a very, 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 very slim potential, but it does exist.
They don't take, bring props at least, they don't bring?
They don't bring much.
They don't bring much.
They bring empty stuff back, but not full stuff. Anyway, okay, so we'll keep it in the budget for now. And if that's changed, they need to tell us.
They have told us.
They have told us.
They have told us.
I'm not sure where it got lost, as it went its way up the chain, but we have sent this up the chain. There's very little, like well under 1%, but, you know, a car, two cars a year type of thing.
And a part of this plan is actually to look at all the hazards that can impact both communities, because a lot of this stuff that we're talking about, we don't know the answers to in terms of what is a, what is realistic in terms of a hazard that could, you know, because most of us think that it couldn't just be Whistler and Squamish evacuating at the same time. So that's what this is also going to look at, and it's also going to look at every option. So trains, back roads, everything you can possibly think of. So instead of us guessing all the time, we can say with very great certainty that this is what could harm us, or as much education as we can, and then also how we can get people out. And we are actively trying to find other funding opportunities, so hopefully this wouldn't cost as much.
Okay, we're going to move on. Thank you. Is there anything else on that page four of nine? Actually, I have a list. We were at, Susan is next, and Karen, Linda.
The library extension work-study space, Jason brought it up, and I did it as well. He's done quite a lot of renovations on the space in the last few years. And I'm not, I didn't really understand the expansion of work-study space.
Can you just point the number?
Number 40, library extension work-study.
On the, on that, go your shoe, and then I'll go back to this. Karen and Jason.
I was just going to answer from sitting on the library work, but this is half. So when the library's at capacity, the seating areas are full. And so at each time, people are, have provided feedback from the library that they can't find a place to sit. So instead of putting in more tables, the library is considering putting just thin laptop counters along the north windows and the south windows with some plugs so that people could come and use the library. And then they would just need to reconfigure the teen area a little bit to find a different shelving system to display those books, to make room for that counter. But it's really about just trying to stay within their footprint and meet the demand because visitation is growing year over year. That's what they're attempting to do with this budget item. And then the carpet one that was on the previous list is actually in the room where they have all the parent and baby sessions, same ones and many times and that sort of thing. And that carpet can, I wonder, be claimed that it's pretty. So the kids are crawling around and stuff like that, which is why they earmarked that.
Jason.
Yeah, I, I'm okay with the $12,000 as new seating range. That was okay.
I thought that was kind of a creative solution, too. Any, I've only got Susan sort of to say and pull that out. Is anyone else?
No, I, I, that, no, I just want to explain. And then, because we just have done, last year, we just gave it to the faculty. But the carpet, can we not get carpet? If there's babies crawling around, can we get something that's flattable like vinyl? If there's going to be fluids and everything else, like, do we have to put carpet on the floor if it's babies crawling around?
I, that's, I think up to the library to determine, but I'm assuming they're considering.
The budget.
They're contemplating flooring that is on the, the activities on which it would be. I have Karen and Doug on my list. I can't remember what I, I might end, so I'll go to Doug, and I'll give you a chance to go with.
Yeah, different topic.
Yeah.
And I can't remember, we talked about this before, but I'm looking at number 22, the downtown engine study, which seems to be partly carried forward. The net effect on taxation this year is the 38.615, which seems like we're adding money to it. And I'm just wondering, A, we want to do it this year, I guess, and B, is that right? Are we putting more money towards it?
The, and this is the downtown engine study?
Yeah.
Gary?
Because part of it's accumulated surplus, part of it looks like other, whether that is, and then 38.615 again from taxation.
So the intent on that was always a two-year. So essentially, we're compressing the, so we're not adding to scope, we're just compressing the funding into 2018. That's why it's growing. It was over two years, we didn't get to it this year. So it's been compressed into 18. So that's.
So we haven't started yet?
That's correct, yeah.
DCC is.
Yes, there's DCC funding as well.
Oh, that's the other one?
Yes. So that's the functional study, the design from Cleveland, from the highway to Buckley, and that intersection.
Yeah, I guess my comment would be, as much as I'd love to see this happen, that we've been talking about for quite a few years, I'm just, I guess I have to ask the question, can we put it off for another year?
Gary, that's a question.
Yes, yes, we, everything can be pushed.
Well, without messing up something else.
And that was predicated, that was part of the negotiation video in front. Was it not that DCC project?
I don't recall that, one way or the other.
No, okay, no, I'm picking up something else, obviously. So on that topic, I had a bunch of hands go up. Was Jason was on this one, I've got Jason and Ted and Susan.
Yeah, and I, I think that, I looked at the details on this one, and it's actually, it's kind of a bit of, maybe not properly aimed. It's more of the downtown transportation, that sort of, I read it as like how, and it'll prevent individual developers from having to do their own traffic study every time a new building comes up, and obviously, hopefully have a more comprehensive plan for downtown. So, because I know when I originally looked at it, I was like, oh, let's just take it as be some aesthetic thing, but it's more of an engineering traffic. I think that's kind of correct. My other question, though, was, would it be possible, or is it within the scope at all to? to roll in the whole parking thing into that? Or is that, is it staff's preference to completely keep those separate? And the reason I ask that is because in my view, this sounds like a parking study and parking capacity, planning for the entire downtown. That's a good DCC kind of project rather than a, you know, kind of one-off, you know, taxation funded thing. I'm just wondering if it's too late to even consider that or if they are, because obviously there'll be generation of data around car trips and sort of thinking about how that works.
I guess one deductive into the other, we do have a parking scene tomorrow.
Tomorrow, but the entrance study has almost nothing parking value. It's all movement vehicles. There is no parking there right now and no plans as far as I know where to put parking there. The parking implementation study is really around how do we optimize what we've already got, looking at paid parking, paid parking options, location of a parcade, costing a parcade and getting the right cash and loot. So those two are sort of, those two can operate quite independently. And both, both can be pushed. It'll just mean that there's policy.
Yeah, and I'm definitely not suggesting that they be pushed. I think that they're, they're both important. I guess my question is, is has staff thought about going forward two or three years from now, sort of what the sort of, the general downtown transportation plan is? And so, you know, are we going to have targets for modal share? And how will those change? And how might that, you know, impact what kinds of things we put in our provision for parking and transit investment and all of that? So maybe it's sort of, to put a bug in staff's ear about in future years, maybe thinking about how we take that to the next level.
I think that's what this is.
That's exactly, it's to build capacity for the future. That would, to plan for capacity for the future.
Oh, yeah, that downtown transportation model, which is exactly what Counselor Blackwell just described as.
Okay, thanks. On this topic, I've got Ted and Susan, and then I'll go back to Karen.
Where's the progress in this, in this corner? I mean, it's their corner. And so I thought we were looking at a pullout lane and we've had more accidents there than any other intersection in North America. And we're spending all that money on a traffic study?
No, that's from this point, our direction, from that point into.
Basically Buckley towards downtown. It's not including the highway interest change, which is a whole other beast.
Does it also include the proposed second bridge on Peverdy?
No, that's going to be, trying to get that into the DCC model right now.
Is it wise to do this study without including that secondary bridge that we're going to have in a few years?
It would include that.
What?
Considerate the downtown transport, the overall transportation model course that's going to look at the second bridge, probably give us some data as to when we might need it. The DCC model is simply going to put a cost to that and start collecting some money from DCCs.
Yeah, but this, this plan will contemplate that.
Yes.
Okay, excellent. Susan, on this topic?
So that, I'm just thinking about how it is now and what a nightmare. All those stops and starts and merges and truckloads. This is incredibly important to get done. Because, you know, I just look at the amount of development on tomorrow's agenda and most of it actually takes up a lot of, like, a lot of it is cars coming in and out of downtown on that one road with no exit and a train crossing and this weird piece that merges off with the BC Hydro piece of land. All of those pieces, we don't have a good future plan for transportation on exit and exit.
So has anyone not agreed, anyone want to take this? Counselor, you already started out thinking, push it out, but you're good? Okay, I think we're all ready.
Michael, we can hear Doug's package tomorrow. Which you're already done.
Yeah, no, it was good to have the conversation, understand what the scope was. All right, I don't have anyone on my list right now. Any other items on number four that council wants to consider or discuss? Don't see any hands. Where's, what's our next step?
So we can review the parking last, from last week.
So where, do we want to go to, where do we want to go now?
Want to review the changes from last week?
Sure. Let me just. Before you do that, I just want to go to council. I know Counselor Shapal has to leave at four. Counselor, your Kent has to leave at 4:30. Counselor Elliott?
20 past four.
20 past four? But you can come back if necessary. Everyone else is okay? Just want to make sure you lose four. All right, we're going to go under our parking lot?
Yep. So we had these items from last week and I like those items there from, well, reviewing the capital project list.
So let's just go through this list. That was for possibly up to 20,000, the ocean loss task force stuff?
Oh. No, I've confirmed that number now. It's going to be 5,000 a year for three years.
Okay, so everyone's okay with putting that money in the budget? So maybe do you want to move that motion? If I can, Counselor Ray, second.
Well, before I do that, because there was a question, I had a discussion offline with staff last week about how that might look because it was a three-year commitment. Whether we go by way of grant and aid for three years, we can do a three-year grant or whether there was some other mechanism. So happy to move either or just take staff's advice on that.
Okay. What staff's advice?
It probably does serve well under the grant and aid program because you can specify it, whereas the budget may not. But once council makes a commitment, depending on, I'm not sure what the documentation, if it's contractual, then we would just contract it as well. We can go either way. So if it's a contract, we could also contract for three years and it's represented in our budget.
So if we put it in the grants and aid for three years, we can take it out of that and put it in a contract if necessary? That DCC?
So I'll move the grant and aid for three years, 5,000 per year?
Said by Counselor Kent?
18, 19, and 20.
18, 19, and 20, 5,000 from here in grant aid. And we can move it out of grant aid and something off to contract, but it disappears for three years then. I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed, motion carries? We already talked about the living wage policy, we're going to get that back in January. It's not going to impact this year's budget per se in any dramatic sense. We'll get the exact figures so we know what's happening. I'm keeping and choosing easy ones. Were we waiting for more information on the, of the ammonia?
Thank you, I'll do my best, but Robin might need to save me. There's been a few work safe outfalls from the issues that have happened this past year. And so there is some minor budget required to satisfy that, some emergency lighting, I believe was one of them. And can you remind me the second? I have it in my book, but I think you probably know faster than me. So there is a small ask for that, I believe it was 15,000.
15,000.
15,000. The facility manager, because it's a late ask, she has opted, you know, she's offered another project up, but would, obviously that project's important too for facility maintenance. So we'd prefer that it would just be put in the budget as a required or emerging item.
And if I might just add to that, these will be coming as work safe orders. So we will have to do them. So we may as well put them in the budget if council, otherwise what can we?
So do we know how, is it 15,000 the request is?
Yeah.
Is there a motion to that effect moved by Counselor Shapal, by Counselor Elliott? Any discussion? I'll call the question, all those in favor?
Yeah, it's the same, I know it's in here.
Public art reserve contribution, we typically put 50,000 plus 1%. Just a bit of an update on that, because this is tomorrow's agenda, the minutes from the last meeting. The committee's focusing in on truth and reconciliation is sort of a big art project. Committee's been putting away a certain amount every year so that they can do something significant. And the committee's actually meeting with Squamish Nation elders in January to discuss it further. So they're really trying to do it in collaboration with the nation. But that's certainly where their, their heart and their mind is. I mean, we're still going to do some small projects every year, but I think every three or so years, they want to do larger projects. And ideally, they'd like to leverage the money that they sort of scroll away in reserve to actually leverage it for even more and do something quite comprehensive. But that's sort of where things are going right now. Counselor Ray, some questions.
Just refresh my memory, what's the 1% of growth? How do we define growth?
So it's always a little bit of our best to interpret the policy from that perspective. So generally what we do is we look at the capital plan and we look at anything that is truly of a growth nature project rather than rehab and rehabilitation type projects. And we look at those capital investments for the particular year that we're in. We take 1% of that.
And, oh yeah, that's right. And it, like, the last couple of years has been just 50,000 instead of doing this 1% capital growth project calculation just because it's easier math than anything. And it creates some certainty instead of all of a sudden, one year it's 100,000. It's 20,000 or whatever. And so it's, we just sort of, I can't remember how it came to that conclusion, but instead of it sort of fluctuating every year, it's been just 50,000 a year.
Yeah, I think it was, might have been 30 originally and then it moved up to 50, which made sense given the growth related type projects. And so we kind of rounded it out to something.
I thought it was 50 from the beginning, but I forgot.
Could be my memory could be bad.
And is that funded from borrowing, roasting up the borrowing? Or is that just coming out of taxation?
Right now it's coming straight out of taxation.
It's, yes, it's paid through general revenue as it would burn high in revenue.
Thanks. So I have a problem with paying for growth through taxation for amenities like art that should be paid for by development. I think that we should have a fund that is required that if you reach a certain amount of density, that you have to put into public art. I know it's a community amenity contribution, but our policy should include art. And, you know, instead of having our public put art that raises the value of people's projects, it should be developers, we undercharge development because of our density rules right now. And I really think there has to be something contributed by density and growth. They are making the growth happen, not, the current taxpayers aren't making growth happen. It's the development committee.
So, yes. The public art committee talked about this quite a bit at the very beginning. We actually had another yield who chairs the public art, one for the city of Vancouver and a variety of others. And what other communities have found is that new development should absolutely be incorporated, public art into their built environment. It should be just part of the cost of development, just a built environment. What happens is you start to see a disparity between existing neighborhoods and new neighborhoods. And so the idea of this is that we create an internal fund that allows for the general, so it's not just the new neighborhoods that are gaining benefit of public art that we have more of a robust, I agree, I think developers still should be paying, putting public art. But that was, that was sort of the rationale originally.
Yeah, so try this as a rationale. All the, we only have 12 kilometers and all new neighborhoods are old neighborhoods. So we see densification in old neighborhoods and they do, they may add public art, like a sculpture or something, but it's not community decided. There needs to be something because they are, they are contributing to the growth of our community and densifying existing neighborhoods. They need to contribute something to the overall growth, which is what community amenities are planned for. And we keep, need to keep our housing reserves and everything else, but we need to add an amenities or culture because adding density needs to add culture to those neighborhoods, which are all old neighborhoods.
And we are going to finalize our CAC policy by February.
Even if we keep the taxation the same, but add something more. Like, I'm not saying remove anything, but I'm saying that.
Yeah, no, I hear you.
Density should contribute to culture and arts.
And so the CAC one's coming back in February. On this particular one, Doug?
Yeah, is this in the budget right now? Is there a?
There's a 50,000 left in the budget from last year. So it's sitting as an operating line right now.
Excuse me, just 50,000?
There's 50,000 proposed for 2018's budget.
That is not included in the budget.
It's not in the budget?
It is.
It is in the budget.
Because there's 50,000 put in as a service level change last year, it's carried over. So there's 50,000 each year, which then the committee decides to push some to provision. And we push that to provision and then the rest is dealt with through the year. That was to give you some flexibility.
Yeah, but there's an additional 50,000 in this year's budget.
Not additional, no. There's 50, same 50,000.
Yes.
We haven't moved it to 100,000, it's 50 still.
Yes, yeah.
And is the 1% of growth component in the budget at all?
We basically treated this as one and the same. So what happens right now is the public art committee decides, and I believe they're going with about 25,000 dollars a year that's dropping. At the end of the year, we drop that down into the public art provision to make sure that they're building up some funds for a larger project, which just as a point to the mayor, if you know when you'd like to do that, we just need a little bit of heads up. So we make sure we show that draw from reserve in the year that you want to do it.
And I thought that you reflected that in the budget, the potential to spend on a larger project this year?
We have not yet.
It gets all kind of wonky, but.
So if we need to.
So what the public art committee did from day one was there's 50,000, 25 a year. They wanted to put away to do a large, larger projects. And I think it was 15,000 a year was to do like the wraps of the hydro boxes and banners and the smaller art projects. And then 10,000 was put away for maintenance so that we can fix the various murals and sculptures and clean this or do whatever in the future. We're building up a repair reserve so we're not a maintenance repair. So that's how the committee sort of divvied up the 50,000 a year that was.
Yeah, that, if I might, that's how you're spending it. What I'm thinking about is the funding of it. So 50,000 is coming out of taxation, it's in the budget this year. The 1% of growth, which I read that to be in addition to 50,000, the way it's framed up there, is 50,000 plus 1% of growth. Is that a question or are we deciding whether or not to add the 1% or?
We're deciding if we would need to expand the 50,000 to actually use the 1% versus using the standardized 50,000.
What would be 1% of growth this year?
I think the projects, the capital work projects for growth were about like 6, 7, 9 dollars. So it's.
60 or 70. 1% of a million is 10,000 dollars.
So it would be 60 or 70,000 instead of 50,000.
Is that what that's supposed to be? Is it 50,000 plus 1% of growth or 50,000 dollars? Or 1% of growth, whichever is more.
And I think the challenge was that some years the growth projects are 3 million bucks. So you go down to 30,000 and some years it's 7 million bucks, you go up to 70 and.
I hit the base amount, yeah, it's just a question of how high, which higher it could go in the funding of it. So, and so.
If the public art committee had their ways, 1% when there's lots of growth projects and 50 when there's not so.
So, if I can just contain. So, so thinking where we are in the budget and the discussions we've had today, I guess the question is, I mean, no debate in my mind about putting that towards public art. I guess the question is where we source it from? Does it come out of taxation? Or the other thing that's on the board over here is the CAC fund. Is that an appropriate place to take that contribution to from each year? And I'm thinking. And I'm thinking it's a manual thing, so we just take it out of the budget altogether. So we're not putting it in this year, taking it out next year, et cetera. But as a stable form of funding, is that an appropriate place to, to have it come from?
So it's worth, worth a conversation. Um, again, it poses a bizarre disability of things and it's currently not in the CAC draft policy. But Christine, did you want to add to that?
No, I think you've hit it on the head, Mayor Heinzman, right now. And I'm going to look over to Gary a little bit here, but, or Mr. Buxton. Um, that right now the CAC policy does not include that. Affordable housing, childcare, and then some general amenity provisions of which there's a few lists of items. So I think that to draw it right now, I'm just quickly going down the list of, um, holdings that we have right now. I don't believe anything at this point is set for art. So we wouldn't certainly be able to do it right now. Um, it would have to be off of probably a revision to the CAC policy.
Yeah, I think, I think we need to bring that conversation back to the CAC policy conversation for maybe future years. It'll take a while to build that up anyways, but, um, I think at this point, of course, is the only place we can be ready to break it out of this.
So just, and then I'll stop, but, uh, so my last point then is we have fifty thousand in the budget now. I guess the parking lot decision is whether we increase that to sixty or seventy, whatever that number is to get one percent of growth.
Yeah.
All funded from taxation.
At this point, yeah, but we can have that future discussion.
Okay.
I don't hear any other thoughts on that. Why don't we leave it at fifty for now? And then, um, Did I say that over here?
No.
Karen, you, I was looking back to you. Yeah, you're good?
Yep.
Um, and then, uh, turtle trail improvements, we park this. Yeah, Gary.
Yeah, I can speak to this. I, I've reviewed the, the requests from Meg and Matt. All of those sections that they're asking for work on, on, on private property, we don't actually have access to, it's either BC Rail or private landowners. So there's no stat wide of way. I mean, we can, we can get to some of that work probably using operational dollars if we can get access. But if the landowners say no, then we can't, we can't get access. And to be honest, the BC Rail one, they've already said no last year, so. So I think operationally, if we need to, we can get in and help, um, help the turtle trail out. But I don't think there's any need to add budget because frankly, if, if you want to add budget, it's, it's adding to get stat ride of ways in place to allow us to get work done formally. But to be honest, you know, real, I won't speak for the real estate department, but based on the real estate strategy, they have a lot of other stuff that's higher order than, than that. So I think, I don't think there's a budget, I need to put anything in the budget. And I can communicate that back to Meg and Matt if you'd like. And there's nothing, actually, nothing that you could put in the budget that would allow me to get work done on that unless I get permission from the landowners.
Well, I, I, I don't like hearing that BC Rail's already said no to suddenly. We haven't had bigger conversations.
We actually asked this year if we could get on and do some of that work and.
The bureaucrat said no.
Well, actually, no, in my recollection is, someone actually went in and did some brush back and clearing on and some surface work on that and BC Rail accused us of doing it. It wasn't us, so.
Okay, but I think it was a bigger conversation to be had there at a political level. Ted.
Yeah, as long as we continue to do a little bit every year on this, I mean, otherwise it's just going to be a famous unfinished trail. And it was a big push six years ago when I first got on as council and I was pushing this turtle trail and make to corporate. And, uh, it's similar to the loop at Stanley Park in length. And people from Squamish drive to Vancouver and do the loop in Stanley Park. And so, you know, I, I don't want to lose the profile of the trail. I mean, uh, it's a real worthwhile bit of work. The district's having a hard time with our relationship with BC Rail and getting access. Maybe it should switch over to sort of or make to do that work without getting the access. But I just don't, you know, I just want to see it keep moving.
But at this point, uh, if there are some things that can happen, they can, we can observe it operationally and I think there's a political conversation on this that. Okay, um, any other parking lot?
Um, there are one or two things, Mayor Heinzman, if I could circle back on the Community Enhancement Grant, we shut down fairly quickly. We did have a late application for the Squamish Food Policy Council. I'm not sure if you wanted to talk about it at this meeting or if you want them to come as a delegate. They're kind of a late applicant, so, um, they are, uh, I don't believe you've been handed out, but it's the Agricultural Food Systems Plan, they're looking for five thousand dollars and, um.
This is what they've talked about, just to make it to go right?
Yes, exactly. So, and they, like I say, they've put in the application now. I didn't know if you wanted to go as a delegation to council, but it sounds, I think they've already come, so.
Maybe I'll just go to councillor, because she sits on the committee. And I'll maybe I'll just trade a question. We did the inventory last year. We're looking at possibly doing a project plan with S R D. Um, and this dovetails into that. And we talked about it at the last meeting about keeping the momentum going on this work. Maybe you just want to make use people a little bit more about. I'll go to councillor Chappell, put it in, then I'll let councillor with, um, your comment.
Thanks. I actually, I, I attended the Squamish can meeting the other night and they talked, the food council or a lot of the members of the food council were there just put on food policy. And my original concern was it was just about mapping land, but they've already mapped the land. This is about, yeah, exactly. They've already, they want to figure out how to further, uh, implement food policy for the community. And I think it's a highly valuable project. So I would, you know, for five thousand dollars, any work we can do to secure food in our community, I think is, is a bargain, um, volunteer talent. And, uh, the group does so much with the amount of resources we give them. They can't seem to support it.
Would this go to Squamish can or to Squamish Food Policy Group?
Would the applicant to the food policy group?
Okay. Um, anyone disagree with this? Going into drastic, okay, I don't see any disagreement. Moved by councillor Chappell, settled by councillor Prior. Call a question, all those in favor? Opposed, what she carries? Christine, any other, other views?
Right. Uh, there's like the capital items from last week.
My eye hope enough reading.
Mine neither, that's okay.
I'll, I'll answer to you, then you can just qualify.
Gary's walking out.
I really can't see.
Yeah, Mayor Heinzman, there was a question around wayfinding if the rural dividend grant could be applied to it. Um, as we talked about earlier, the projects have already been determined and that's what the granting is for.
No, I think what the question was, is, could it be applied for another grant?
Right, okay, let me see from Kate. I think we can, but not in time for this budget based on the cycle, but let me double check.
And Gary just walked out.
Okay, so let's go to the next one?
Well, Gary.
While we wait, yeah.
Well, what I have here, sorry, from Gary is no.
Well, that doesn't help, doesn't help you. Let's just park that for a minute. Uh, next one?
I'm trying to find something that isn't, Mr. Buxton. Moving here. I think we're unfortunately falling for Mr. Buxton.
And just be cognizant that, um, the audio can't pick you up standing over there talking.
Well, the dressing room for Brennan Park, yeah, yeah. Uh, so I've talked with Camilla and, uh, like it's not, like it's a major project. It's not simple and the, um, it should just go like into like the Brennan Park, um, master plan. Because like you need to like, like knock down walls. It's like a big project, yeah.
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 Okay, so we'll get the master plan back and, and then start to, to drag down. Like, the master plan is important because it will help us prioritize all the Brennan Park, uh, growth improvement areas that we need. It, it's hard to prioritize in isolation of that. Okay, next?
I did also have like some information back from Gary about the water park. And I think he's coming back. Um, so we, I think like a rough estimate was about three hundred grand and like a location to be like determined, so.
Three hundred grand for a water park? What are they? Shoot, champagne? It's a champagne water park. Gary?
That was a very sort of, we contacted a supplier. It wasn't extravagant, but you could probably go smaller, but yeah, it is, they're expensive.
For a splash park? We're not talking water slides in it, we just.
Nope.
Uh, Jason?
Yeah, that sounds about right from what I found, um, from the example on Terrace where they finished construction last year, their budget was two hundred and fifty thousand, so. Uh, but that was a, a pretty good sized one. It was in their downtown park. But I was just wondering in terms of, I mean, I guess it could be, is that their minimum size? Did they, did they not do anything smaller?
I suspect they do, but you don't start with the small one and, and then try to upsell yourself, so.
Yeah.
I suspect we can do less, but that, it's not fifty thousand dollars, it's.
So I, I sort of like, I'm holding up the, the spray park sort of as an example. I mean, obviously there's other things, um, that you could do, um, to, to park space. Um, but I want to throw it out there, but as a straw map so that we can think about. I see that we have, um, some of the printout of, um, some of the, uh, general amenity contributions that we have, general amenity funds. Um, and I just think it's really important that we actually start to, um, park some of those funds for some specific projects that, you know, I know in the case of Terrace, um, there was a lot of, um, private fundraising done um, to match municipal dollars. And I'm just wondering if it could be helpful for us to sort of have a general, um, amount there to say to the public, like, look, we, we're prepared to do a park enhancement. Um, and maybe throw a splash park out there as one of them. Cause I just, that one seemed to be the best one in terms of something that doesn't exist in Squamish yet, but that is not like on the scale of like a Brennan Park remodel or whatever, which we, we know the master plan is, is coming. Um, and the reason, which I, I started to articulate in the last meeting, that I felt it was important is that this might be an upgrade that we could do in a more densely populated area, so not necessarily at Brennan Park, but, um, somewhere in the downtown area or somewhere in the, uh, Garibaldi Estates area, as we used to call it, but you know, downtown and that kind of area there. We know that those are areas that, um, are, uh, under-resourced in terms of park space, um, North Yards, let's call it. So I just wanted to throw that out there and, you know, it seems to me that perhaps, um, we might decide like, okay, well, we're going to allocate a hundred and fifty thousand dollars and have that park there, um, to get a project, uh, going, um, or not. Uh, but I did have some questions about the amenity, uh, list that came up.
Yes.
Um, so number one, the one that says Anthem Properties. Um, could you explain a little bit? I, I'm confused. I'm not familiar with that one. Um, and it says, there's two lines to it. So one of them says seventy-six thousand and the other one says twenty-six thousand. And it says annual contributions from district.
Sure, I can explain the, um, so the, the first one was the original CAC portion. Um, and for Anthem Properties. And so they're looking for something kind of in that area.
Which project, which, which development is that?
To be honest, I'm going to need some support. This is older. This has been in the CAC for quite some time, so I'd have to go back. Um, but it has been references being something in the downtown area, which was going to help, help the Kindry Park site. So it's been in the fund for quite a while, pretty well, several years ago. Um, but we can certainly go back and find more. I've got, there's backup spreadsheets on this, which I can pull up in a moment and see if I can get a little more intel on that one. But the second portion, the twenty-six thousand, with the Cleveland property, any lease net of any expenses that it costs us to run the, uh, park side? I'm sorry, I can't remember the name of it right now, copper grill.
Copper grill.
Lease, um, whenever we have any surplus from that in the year, we drop that into the CAC provision as an ongoing enhancement, which was intended at some point for possibly a park or something back in the envisioned days of park side. I'm looking around for my intel at the table of my councillors that have been here longer than me, but.
So the Anthem Properties is seventy-six thousand? And it says specified, specified for where?
So projects neighboring and trails in the downtown area near the Kindry Park site.
No, 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 those are two separate line items.
I believe that's the seventy-six.
Kindry Park site is the copper foil, that's twenty-six thousand. Anthem Properties says seventy-six. I don't think it has anything to do with Kindry. I think you're reading two lines into one. Am I getting that wrong?
I think they're related. I think one might be up and one might be down. But I believe that the twenty, and I know the twenty-six is for sure off the Kindry, which is the annual contribution from D O S line.
Can we get some clarification with Anthem Properties?
Sure, let me, I'll bring it up.
It's a business one.
Well, this is, and this is, their dedication was for the Discovery Trail, that's what I remember.
Oh, yes, okay, thank you.
I think that line, community amenity for water and sewer, industrial park, park, fine away, probably relates to that, just they don't line up. But that's where Anthem is. They have that big piece next to the Sandman.
I'll bring, I'll bring up the actual spreadsheet that, um, this is coming straight out of the staff spreadsheet.
Anthem is the, um, Sandman slash that big area there. And that is sit, been sitting in a reserve probably at least.
Since before I was on council.
Yeah, fifteen years, a long time. Oh, yeah, I don't know, but anyway, um, and it, is it a hundred percent specified? I mean, council has the opportunity to specify amenity funds anywhere. I know council of the day had earmarked it for something, but can we change that?
Okay.
I'll come, yeah.
My understanding is it was through of, uh, what we did before land development agreements. So because the properties changed hands a number of times, I think, um, they were supposed to have the development to a certain point. I'm not sure what happens with an amenity in that, that, um, instance, but.
We determine if we can spend that on anything we have?
I would think the agreement has lapsed that would have been involved with the donation.
Can we, can we determine if we can spend that on anything else that actually?
Yeah, and my point would, well, my point on that would be that, you know, it says community amenity for water and sewer, well, I mean, we can do D C Cs for that now. So, I mean, it would be better, in my view, if you're putting that towards an amenity that does not qualify for a D C C. Um, and in terms of location, um, you know, I would suggest that perhaps we might want to, um, think about what residential areas, um, we, we might want to consider, but, um. And then the other one that I was wondering, um, I don't know if, uh, there are any other pending and sometimes I get them confused whether they were rezonings or D Ps. Um, but the, the project at the corner of Third and Main Street, that's just being dug up right now, was that a rezoning as well or was that a D P? I think it was a rezoning, I don't remember.
Just the core duplex lot?
Yeah.
Core lots as a rezoning.
So.
I think from ours, one of ours, two.
Yeah, so I'm just wondering, I didn't see that one on there. And I'm assuming that the CAC's already been paid, given that they're, they're.
And it's usually done for every additional lot, so it would be just times four.
Yeah, forty thousand.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it seems like this li, list isn't complete. Is this list complete?
It is, and, um, there's a little star on it that talks about the fact that when it's going to Affordable Housing Reserve, we s, we go right by this reserve and go straight to Affordable Housing Reserve. So that's why it might seem like you don't have a huge robust balance because you're putting a lion's share of your CAC to the Affordable Housing Reserve. Um, I do want to just circle back, um, the Anthem Properties, from all I can tell from the, their, uh, file that we have here, was something to do in the downtown. And one of the things they purchased was the Kindry property. It looks like was part of how they, for future park use. So it, they are related. So it, they are related. Anthem must have been one of the developments downtown. Um, so there are, those are the lines, um, they may not seem like they line up, but Squamish Power is the one that's about water, sewer, and industrial um park and Pioneer Way. And uh and then the Canadian Hy- um, sorry, Canadian Hydro is to do with the enhancement of outdoor recreation opportunities. So kind of carry on down there. Uh, they are, I, they might not be showing lined up. I should have put some lines on.
But Canadian Hydro is a yearly contribution of forty thousand, is it not?
It is, and generally you put thirty thousand of that directly to sort of trails.
And so right now, the current, the next year's added is twenty-four five ninety. So next year, we'd add another ten?
You'd add another ten, correct.
Okay, and that's for recreation still, okay?
Um, were there other questions? I'm sorry.
I would like to get the Anthem Properties one clarified, understand?
So what clarity is it you'd like, just so that I understand?
I just don't, I don't understand why it's related to the downtown part of Kindry Parkside.
I think that was just one of the expenditures you made. It was a hundred thousand dollar CAC to begin with. There was a withdrawal in twenty-ten of twenty-three thousand, um, three twenty-one. It says here, future park property, Kindry Parkside, so it must have gone towards helping to purchase the five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar property, perhaps? That's the intel I have on that.
I see, I see. So you spent some of that on that designated, so, okay.
So.
Okay, okay, I get it now. Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah.
So um, the other, the other properties I was thinking of is um Main Street on Cleveland, the big one there, was that a DP as well? I guess that would make sense.
The main?
Did the main, did they do?
I was like, some DP.
It was a DP. It was rezoned up for something else.
Okay, and there was, and they didn't do any additional amenities.
Just before the CACs.
Yeah, they gave to the loan center.
Okay.
There was something, but it was before our CAC policy.
Um, and then was there not also another one on Second Avenue, Second and Victoria? Was there not a rezoning? Yeah, I thought we did recently.
Okay.
Was that a DP? Um.
Maybe we, maybe, maybe um for next CAC meeting, CDC meeting, um, we can get a list of development applications in terms of CAC policy and when they get have to pay and how much has been put in. Is that helpful?
Yeah, that would be good. I mean, I just, I don't know, looking at it in sort of cursory fashion. Um, and then, of course, tomorrow night, we have one that um, you know, there's gonna be another CAC, the general part, if we approve it, will probably be about seventeen thousand. So I guess the point I'm trying to go into is that we probably have somewhere in the order of a hundred thousand or so in terms of funds, if we chose as a council to actually put that towards something. And I think it's better to put them all together, because you know, ten thousand here, twenty thousand there, it's not gonna do anything, and I I do really think it's important that, given that we've had so much growth in the past few years, that we gotta have some amenities for people who are dealing with that growth and, you know, um.
Yeah, and some of it is um, those amenities don't get paid until subdivision, Gary, or
Occupancy.
Or occupancy, and so it could be, and I'm looking, Christine told me to be quiet, it could be that we know X amount is coming within the next couple of years. And so can we, in theory, borrow from one reserve, like, give me the surplus and pay it back once these things come in? Or is that dangerous?
Um, I haven't seen that mechanism specifically with CACs. I guess to Counselor.
Because it's hard to predict, because if they don't have, they may not get built.
Yeah, I mean, when the smoke clears, I mean, it, some of these were brought in under specified purposes, which I think we'll have to go and see how they were brought in in the past, to see how definitively they were prescribed. Um, I believe that's, this was done probably back in about twenty-twelve, that Ms. Greenleys went back and and did some of this research, and that's the basis of this list now. So I believe she felt that it was specifically specified at the time that she did this. And then we've been adding to it since based on the actual CAC policy. So I would say that it, we probably do need to find something now. It's fairly loosely termed, so I'm sure that we can find projects that fit these things. But to Counselor Blackman Wolf's suggestion, I tend to agree. The more we don't break things up in our reserves and our provisions and keep them more holistic, the more flexibility you have and the more opportunity you have to build something of significance that you can use in a certain way. So that would be my suggestion back as you look at your CAC, is to think about, you know, either just going all general specified or affordable housing, general specified, something like that, so that you do have a chance to build this to something that you could use definitively or more flexibly.
Just one more last thing. So I'm just thinking then, if, for example, if if it is the case that perhaps the Anthem and the Kindry Parkside, we have some flexibility on that, um, you know, that's a hundred thousand, and then we have the Aqua, uh, and then the the three-nine-seven-seven-one, the Breeze, that's a hundred and sixty thousand right there, if we put all of those together. So we're kind of getting in the zone um of something without even talking about future um CACs coming in, so.
But you, you do notice that that um, the Aqua and the Breeze work with the childcare, right? That was the policy of that day when it was collected?
Well, well, they have the eighty-five hundred to childcare and a thousand, but there's still the general ones, like the thirty-four and twenty-nine.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, okay.
Sixty-three.
Gotcha, yeah.
Almost sixty thousand.
Um, so, because in my view, when it says preference expressed, I I don't really see that as very strong.
Yep, fair enough.
Yeah, and and the Loggers Lane townhouse upgrades to Brennan Park, you know, can it fund some of our Brennan Park improvements, for example? Okay, thank you, um, yeah.
And just two of those quotes, those comments about, and the ability to use private partnerships as well. Gary's saying that we have our policy coming soon, Mr. Black? Three D?
No, that was the CAC policy.
Okay, but you had meant that about being able to use private partnerships?
That, I believe, is the sponsorship policy.
Go ahead.
That's good. Glenn, do you have the comment?
Q one?
We will have the draft Q one. We will, but I'm not sure when it'll come together.
Does staff want to have a look at these to see if there's, like, for example, there's one year for Brennan Park improvements, a hundred forty thousand dollars? Is, you know, can we, for example, if we do a splash park, I'm just using that as the example, because it's sort of was the genesis of this, to put towards a splash park at Brennan Park, we could use those funds to do that?
Yeah, I I think that would be reasonable. And I do apologize, um, Ms. Arthers has just pointed out that we have the the bottom line, the Breeze Townhouse. We've got it flipped. It's actually twenty-nine thousand to childcare and thirteen to general. My apologies for that.
Jason, did you have a followup?
Um, yeah, I guess the only other thing too is that the thing that I find difficult about when we allocate everything to Brennan Park is that with Brennan Park projects, you know, we definitely have a lot more flexibility for like borrowing and looking at it through a lot of other funding ties, whereas the park improvements are more challenging, I think, on an individual basis. And so, you know, could it be a way that, you know, maybe we, you know, kind of flip that a little bit in terms of, you know, stuff that we, maybe we would have funded through um the CAC for Brennan Park? We do through our regular process, and then we scoop that money up and play it somewhere else. Just sort of throwing that out there, and it's also something to think about when we, I mean, I clearly, I think we're in a much better position now than we were when, you know, even the Loggers Lane one was done, but, you know, kind of not tying council's hands too much when it comes to voluntary CACs, when we're negotiating with the developers. These developers, while we prefer, that'll be immediately adjacent to their property, but maybe that might not be the priority of the day, so. I think a lot, like, probably.
Yeah, no, it's just that the, the, it sounds like one of these is prescribed to upgrades at Brennan Park, one forty. I just thought, maybe staff wants to have a look at that, that it's already prescribed, but I agree that we need to, within our policy, have the ability to respond to the needs of the day and the growth needs of the day. And we're to set out parameters in our CAC policy, but to get it so prescribed down and not be able to act to general growth issues, I think it's, it's counsel back on, limiting, limiting future councils.
And I think that's how they're shifting, more generally oriented.
Yeah, it's affordable housing and critical facilities.
Yeah.
The way it was last time they sorted them is unchanged.
Um, so just being cautious that we're about to lose Counselor Kent. Counselor Elliott said she could come back if council's willing to keep going on this. How much more do you think we're?
Um, so I think. Do you have a, I think, and then I'll chime in after.
I have about like five parking lot items in the capital plan, I'd like to quickly review. I think if council did ask for a little more information, uh, so if we could review that.
He's still at forum, so.
Uh, that would help.
Okay.
And Gary's here, so let's start with Gary Bell, the Templeless Signal.
Yep. What, what was the, what was the question about that, that was parking lot?
I think the question was, he didn't know to say yay or nay yet, and so we wanted to be part of it.
So it was like parked.
Oh, no, there were, no, my recollection was, was there an ability to have the developer?
Oh, right.
And that's, the answer to that is perhaps negotiable, potentially negotiable, but I couldn't give you a, it'll be X percent or a dollar value. It's, it's subject to negotiation as a CAC.
Is that, I mean, it's a bad intersection, but is it necessarily through that intersection without the potential growth of, like, is there enough with Sky Ridge and Rock Ridge to necessitate an analysis of intersection? Or is it really if something like the polygonal score would then tips?
That, yeah, that will be answered by the traffic evaluation, which I believe is underway. In my opinion, yes, if it's, if it's required, if they tip the balance and cause that intersection to fail, then I think we have a very strong case to assign the cost to them. If it doesn't, then uh we can't, we can't, we could at best assign a portion of it to them or it's negotiated as a CAC.
Jason?
Yeah, so I think, to me, that sort of sounds like perhaps we might be wise to wait it here uh before we make a final decision on that, given that, you know, that project is working its way through the approval processes and, you know.
Well, it looks like only twenty-five grand is in this year, and then twenty, the majority of the budget, am I looking at the right one?
You are.
The majority of the budget is twenty-nineteen.
Design twenty-eighteen, remedy twenty-nineteen.
And so would we want it, are we designing it for the full buildout of that area?
I think, I think that's the key question back to staff, perhaps, is whether or not that's just impacted by one project or if it's holding up several projects. If it's just one project being held up, then often we do not reflect it in our financial plan, because then they're advancing history and frankly, but if we need it for multiple things.
Some of our history impacts it, Sky Ridge and.
Talk Ridge.
Garibaldi, uh, Gold Cores.
So it makes it a bit harder to argue that, that we're not there yet, so you need to come to the table.
I would say we, we take it off if some things move forward there. They can absorb the cost of this. We take it off this year, or we push it out at least till twenty-nineteen design? Okay, um, next.
Uh, the fleet replacement of a Ford Ranger for uh F three fifty, um.
There was two vehicles that Counsel, um, Counselor Elliott had suggested that perhaps we wanted to do accumulated surplus, get it into the equipment replacement reserve, and then we can ramp it up. I have no problem with that approach. I think that's actually not a bad way to go in this case. So if council's interested in those projects, I I would support that for sure.
So why don't we clearly articulate that in a motion? Moved by Counselor Ray, seconded by Counselor Ray Pryor, that the two fleet vehicles, new fleet vehicles, be funded through accumulated surplus.
Maybe lose the new. One of them is an upgrade, I believe.
Oh, okay.
Because one was, had a relatively small taxation component. The reserve covered almost the whole thing. Uh, there's another one that had a significant gap between the reserve and the purchase price. And that's the one where we will be funding the gap with accumulated surplus as opposed to taxation. If you forget the numbers, twenty-four or twenty-eight or something.
So you're suggesting the gap and the new one?
We only have to deal with the one.
Yeah, the big one.
The big one. The other one is a thousand dollars.
Oh, okay, that's right, that's right.
And to be honest, when we actually rejig the numbers at the end of the year for the equipment reserve, we may find that the equipment reserve has come up sufficiently through accumulated surplus. So we, we deal with the numbers we have at the time, but when we close the year, we see what surplus is there and we redistribute again, so it may be that the sixteen-hundred's covered off.
How would the motion be?
Thirty, thirty-seven, is that the, is that the one?
Thirty-eight. Uh, yeah, thirty-seven, yes.
Thirty-seven, so with respect to item number thirty-seven, um, my motion is that we fund the gap or the difference between the reserve and the purchase price from accumulated surplus.
Great, thank you.
That most, Sarah? Is it Sarah or what? Sarah. That was your, okay, that's the motion seconded. I'll call the question, I'll lose in favor. So this motion carries. Next.
Okay, next item is number thirty-eight, is the transit stop infrastructure improvements. Um, I believe it was um, asked for staff to come back, um, number thirty-two. So I'm just looking at my list. Uh, for design and uh funding.
Can we say that again?
It was asked to come back with some options for design and different funding than taxation.
I think that one of the concerns here was that we might be building, overbuilding a nice shelters and whether there was an option for.
I think we'd rather get more for the same amount of money, more shelters, and figure out a way to maximize those dollars to get shelters that still fit in with the property worth the town, but maybe aren't close to being, and yes, designed differently.
Oh, I was gonna say, other communities go out to design competitions for RFPs or, and several different designs that are built by concrete industries that are cool.
I think we tried to do that last time, we just didn't get the uptake. Was that not right? I thought we had gone to.
I don't know that we've done a design competition.
You need to talk about it. No, that's right.
But, I mean, it was a local designer that did the timber framework on this. I mean, the balances between if you've got eclectic, different pieces of maintenance is tricky, because you've got nothing standard, so you're constantly trying to source special, special dimensions. So I, I think we can bring this back for scoping.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't think there was a question about the budget, as what are we getting for our money? Um, part of it as well was concrete work as well, which is, I think there were only two shelters. We may be able to get three or four if we downscale and get some, something off the shelf.
So is everyone okay with the budget amount? And then we can determine, I know there was discussion about, should we have more ramps or should we have more seats without the shelter or whatever? We can determine exactly.
We'll bring Counselor Project Scope earlier in the year then.
Okay, everyone's okay with the amount then? Okay, so we'll leave that in. Um, I, I wasn't gonna get a motion for every little thing, I was only gonna do if it's different from what to propose or taking something on. Is that all right?
Okay, that's great, thanks.
Okay, and next?
Next one is number forty-one, the streetlight LED conversion program. Uh, it was asked that staff would come back with more industry, um, ROI and.
And percent replaced per year now.
So we are replacing around eight, we have about nine hundred um of lights on poles. That doesn't include the stuff that's attached to B C Hydro poles, that's theirs. So we're not dealing with that at this point in time, so about nine hundred. We've started a, and council has this funding in the budget um for a ten-year replacement, so eighty to ninety a year, they're anything from three, they're around three hundred and fifty bucks a unit. I don't know that we've done the ROI. We've assumed that there is a good one. Um, we're replacing them as they burn out or a complete section or a whole street, if we can do that. So we've, we're sort of one year into a ten-year full replacement on that. So there is sort of a, a decade-long project to, to go through and replace them. We would probably struggle to do something that was really big, given the load on the, the two staff, sort of in the electrical side of the, the organization of public work, so. To be honest, we've, haven't struggled, but we've, it, it's been tough to get the, the ninety done in twenty-seventeen, so.
And our staff puts them up?
No, we're, we're contracting it in large part. It's, it's coordination with. No, we're contracting it in large part, it's coordination with that contractor. So we have a program, albeit a 10-year program in place to sort of rotate through and replace as they fail or in sections that we can work on.
Peter?
How many did we get to this last year?
Did have that. How many did we get to? Sorry, I will, can I get back to you on that one, Counselor?
So just quickly looking to Council, Counselor Elliott's asking if she should come back, how long do you think we're going to be going on?
I don't know if that will make sense in order, given where we're at.
I need to tell her not to come back.
Gary, am I correct in understanding they do have a budget that they're working with right now, right? This was to enhance that program?
No, there was, there was no plan. Council just wanted to know where we were at with that program.
Well, but there's a line item on the capital.
From everything I've read, the ROI on this is very good. And I don't know, for whatever reason, what I'm reading doesn't seem to be reflected in what I hear about from staff in terms of the actual ROI. And when I say ROI, it's not just the return on the investment, it's the savings every year after that. If the ROI is less than 10 years, we should be doing it more quickly than we're doing it. I've heard ROIs of a year and a half to three years in best-case scenarios. On average, six or seven years, but that's still better than 10 years. So it seems to me, it's the type of projects that we could use gas tax funding for, I bet you we could get other grants for it. It just seems like a real win-win in terms of carbon reduction, savings in terms of costs. If the ROI and then the accumulated investment is that good, we should be acting on it.
Well, then maybe that's something we should explore as part of the working group to escalate that project up on the carbon neutral of working group, if we believe that.
And I suspect there's a number of lighting companies out there that would give you a pretty good deal on this type of thing if you absolutely.
Yeah, I, in my recollection, the conversations before were, part of it was capacity. So I think we'd have to satisfy ourselves, we could do a third of it or a quarter of it or whatever, in other words, step it up a bit. Second thing is source of funding, do we have gas tax money for it as opposed to taxation? If we're going to increase the number significantly like that, because right now we're talking 27,000 budget, if we're talking a lot more than that, then of course there's an impact to that. So I, and it would be nice to have some, something a little bit more definitive on return on investment because that's the thing that's prompting this decision to move it up. So I think from my perspective, we just leave it in the parking lot, pretend to be a fallback position, is 27,000 on a 10-year program, I guess.
Christine, if hypothetically, if there was a project that your return on investment was five years, would you recommend going to short-term borrowing on something that has such a quick return?
I'd find you other ways to fund it rather than taking 27,000 to borrow in, frankly, because then you're adding cost to it with the interest, so I would probably encourage you to look at accumulated surplus or something if we're just looking at 27,000. If you're looking at the broad.
Oh, I'm talking about the big.
Oh, the big deal, yeah.
No, no, for that amount, no, we said we want it over the next two years.
Do them all.
Do everything, get it done. Our ROI is, we'll figure it out in terms of annual savings on hydro and GHG costs or whatever that is. Figure out the ROI. If it's, if it, just hypothetically, if a project is going to have a ROI less than five years, would you recommend going to short-term borrowing for it?
As, as long as we have a capital item when the smoke clears that has a life longer than that five years, I would consider it. What I just need to get a better handle on is whether they're just changing out 350 dollars per unit or whether they're really looking at street poles and everything. So I'm kind of looking over at Gary to see if there's issues with.
Right now it's fixtures, not poles.
Just fixtures, so I probably wouldn't want to take that to borrowing if I could avoid it, so, but I don't know that there's not other things we could look at.
Okay, that's fine. Okay, so we're going to keep that parked. Jason?
Just a clarification.
Oh, I'm sorry, I had Ted first and then Jason, sorry.
Yeah, I mean, we have talked about this before over the years, and I don't know why we only went to 10%, but at UBCM, when you go down to the trade show they have there, there's five, maybe six companies that sell these lights. And I took their cards and handed them in, and they'll come out, and they'll do the whole assessment, and they will replace all the lights, and they'll tell you the return on investment. We don't have to do anything. So, I mean, that was brought up two or three years ago when we were at UBCM last time, and then we ended up wanting to, and I could never figure out why we ended up just going at the pace we're going at, apart from not wanting to throw away lights that are still being used, you know? You've got a light bulb that's in there that's still good, why throw it away?
Because it's costing you way more money than you would.
I'm just saying, that's, so that's what we chose to do. We chose to do the 10% a year for 10 years. We've had this conversation before.
And I've questioned that decision.
Yeah, me too.
So you said it was 350 dollars a unit?
Right, and three, they're telling me 325 to 365 a unit, depending on which ones have.
And we have 900 units?
Correct.
And so if you replace them all, it's just over 300,000 dollars?
That's for parts, that's not labor.
Okay, so that's for parts, not labor?
It, well, there were two reasons that we didn't come with the big one. One is capacity, it's a big project. Two is capital cost, it compresses that 10 years of capital costs into two years, so it's just a bigger lump instead of nine or 10 smaller ones.
Okay, I, we're going to, we're going to park this. I think we should get a real ROI that is defensible before we make a decision.
Just a technical question, Gary, when you said that the streetlights that are on power poles are BC Hydro, do you mean the ones that go over government road that are attached to it, or do you mean those smaller ones that are right close to the power pole?
If they're on the wooden BC Hydro power poles, then they're BC Hydro, if they're on freestanding poles, they're out.
Oh, okay.
All right, what's next?
Last item in the capital list is the number 42, a community wayfinding project. It was put in the parking lot, just going back on the conversation a bit, there was the entrance sign, there was a no, and it was decided to use the funding for that project, and that was about 20 grand and.
There was some insurance money.
And insurance and accumulated surplus.
So I guess my worry is if we just give up in any given year, it'll just keep letting it push off. What if we did sort of half of this year's budgeted amount, include that leftover insurance money, so did, let's say, 100,000 dollars instead of 175 plus the insurance money, to at least keep the program going? We can just keep it in there as a placeholder, we can still turn it down the road, but at this point, just do it in half. And I think one of the things council talked about was having the committee that decides this is strategize, getting more of the smaller ones out there as opposed to the more monumental Most of the monumental ones, I think, Doug?
Yeah, so somebody expressed the opinion that they wanted to keep this going and the last time we met, and I tend to agree with that, I don't want to lose this. So the only question I have is with respect to the source of funding. It's a lump to take 175,000 or next year 250,000 dollars out of taxation. So when you look at the total cost of that, though, it's a 1.2 million dollar deal, notwithstanding we're doing it over five years, it's still a big item. And so when I think of alternatives for that, I guess you could say, well, one is borrowing, but then it's over five years, so it's maybe a little awkward. But others are other reserves, and, you know, we had the discussion about accumulated surplus, I hate going back to that, but previous discussions have talked about it in the sense that we put some monies aside for working capital, which financing, et cetera. We're going to identify, and we haven't quite done it yet, what is actually surplus and what could drop into a community reserve. And maybe we just say it's a one-off and we're going to do it out of reserves. And maybe it happens over five years, maybe we can now afford to do it over two years, similar to the lighting issue. So for me, there's still a discussion around source of funding, I'll put it that way.
So Mayor Heinzmann, I had indicated that I would try in January to come back and talk to you a little more about your accumulated surplus position. Perhaps we can bundle a few of these things for further discussions at that time as to recommended uses for it.
Okay, why don't we leave it there for now, and then we'll bring it back for the accumulated surplus conversation.
Mayor Heinzmann, I followed up on my correspondence with Kate in terms of the grants and BC rural dividends, so we missed the intakes for 2017. That said, there are other tourism and economic development grants that will continue to be searched in the UCM that any could be applied to.
Okay, great. And then if we can always not take it out of accumulated surplus, we have other sources. Okay?
Mayor Heinzmann, may I go a little bit offside and just ask you a quick and dirty question on.
Call system?
The.
I mean, I meant to say, as long as it's quick.
I was trying to, I was going through my head, how do I make this work? The other day.
You're wrong.
Thank you. The other day, we didn't, we were kind of in the OCP there trying to run through with how we wind down SODC, and so in the heat of the venue and everything, I neglected to just talk to you about, is it your expectation that we're putting that dividend into the land sale reserve? I mean, the underlying intention of it was essentially that it was a land sale.
That's what I assumed, but, yeah.
That's fair for me to assume that, and.
Do you want to motion that?
I would, thank you.
Moved by Council Ray, seconded by myself.
And just for clarification, is that, is that the GST refund?
No, this was the two-point, that dividend, the dividend of winding up.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah, big part.
Let me just, before we go on, Robin, just to clarify, does Ted have a conflict on that, in which case we can't entertain a motion we want it for?
He does have.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, so we will not entertain that motion?
Send me out of there, you could send me home.
Well, you can't because you don't.
No, because then we don't have court, and then you can't, anyway, so.
But at least I know you're kind of, probably making that, okay.
Okay, anything else?
Well, we have two more items in the parking lot, they're, they don't affect like the budget, like, that is for 2019. We talked about the Green House project, but that's a 2019 project. About like a different location and they can.
Okay, that's, that's 2019, then just.
Yeah, and then there is number 18, I think.
Third avenue pond remediation.
Yeah, so I always like to discuss like more like future consideration and differently.
But it's not impacting that too, is it?
No, it's not, no, but it was, yes, so.
Okay.
It was just for discussion.
So we've just put up on the screen there roughly based on what we have on the sheets so far, where we're sitting at the moment for revenue impact, and then we'll come back and talk to you a little bit more in January about some potential opportunities for accumulated surplus. Right now, I believe that does include the 1% increase for capital reserves, so that's something we can come back and talk to you a bit more about.
And that's revenue, and that includes, still includes the RCMP and the firefighter and revenue.
Exactly.
Okay.
So we can come back.
And that's not, that's just revenue, we're not accounting for new revenue?
Exactly, we don't know how that'll impact the household yet, so we'll have, after Christmas, we should have some non-market change, at least some estimates for you. We'll have some accumulated surplus information that might help us, that we can give you some strategies. So unless Sanushka has more she'd like to do, comfortable closing down now?
No, yes, I think we did a great job today, thank you.
Awesome, okay, I'll entertain a motion to terminate. Moved by Jason, seconded by Doug, all those in favor? Opposed, motion raised.